Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM on December 9th. Jason, will you read the replay intro?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Consistent with Executive Order N-29-20 issued on March 17, 2020, and N-35-20, the Governor of the State of California, this meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. The meeting location will be the City Council Chamber, but it will not be open to the public. This meeting of Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, December 11th at 1:00 PM, and Wednesday, December 16th at 7:00 PM. It is also being closed captioned, and it will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. City Clerk will run a speaker timer, and after the first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound to inform you one minute remains, and when the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. With that, Vice Mayor, that takes us to the official call to order.
Thank you, Jason. Will you do a roll call, please?
For this roll call, we will be doing the roll call of the standing City Council, and as noted in the agenda, we will be doing the installation of new officers. So I will start out with Councilmember Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Present.
Councilmember Suwen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Here.
And Mayor Lee is absent. That will conclude the roll call and take us to Item 1.2, the Pledge of Allegiance.
So would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? And can you put the flag on display? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
And with that, that will take us to Item 1.3, the Moment of Silence, Vice Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would chose me, join me for a moment of silence, whether it's for your loved ones, someone in the community that have gone through some hard times. Thank you, everyone. Jason, next item, please.
Now it'll take us to Item 1A, our special action item, which is the certification of the November 3rd, 2020 general municipal election results and the reorganization of Elk Grove City Council. In the staff report, it contains the certificates of facts from Sacramento County Register of Voters for the November 3rd, 2020 general municipal election, which verifies the results of the official canvas conducted by Sacramento County for the City of Elk Grove City Council offices. For the seat of mayor, elected to a full term of office for two years, was Bobby Singh Allen. For councilmember seats in Districts 1 and 3, those elected as councilmembers for a full term of office of four years were Darren Suwen for District 1 and Kevin Spees for District 3. A resolution verifying the election results is available for your adoption at this time.
Okay, we'd like to open public comment at this time. Jason, do we have anyone who has sent in message to be recorded or anyone on the phone?
We do have speakers that have asked to be dialed in for the first part of our public comment. I had three speakers, I believe. I still have to do a little bit of reconciling on my side, but I'll do that as we get this process commenced. But staff can bring over the first speaker signed up for general public, or for public comment on the special agenda action item.
Perfect.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Trina Burke, and I have been a resident of Elk Grove for over 20 years. I'm calling in this evening to publicly congratulate our new mayor, Ms. Bobby Singh Allen, on her national accomplishment of being the first female chief American to be elected mayor. Also, in the immortal words of Dr. Martin Luther King, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Bobby Singh Allen did not stay silent when she answered the call to this office. The City of Elk Grove did not stay silent when they came out in record numbers to choose better leadership. As Mayor Singh Allen sits in this position of leadership, I have no doubt that she will continue to not stay silent about all things that matter to the citizens of Elk Grove. I thank you for your time, and I yield the rest of mine.
Thank you, Speaker. And thank you, Vice Mayor. That'll take us on to our next speaker. That staff will patch in to our teleconference environment. And we thank all of our viewers for your patience as we work through our, the teleconference environment. It is a process where we pull stuff, folks in via a phone call, and then patch them into the meeting environment so that their comments can be heard by the full council. And sometimes it's just a process for us in order to make those connections.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Paul Lindsay. I'd like to take a few moments to welcome Mayor Bobby Singh Allen, Councilmember Kevin Spees, and Councilmember Darren Suwen, and to congratulate them all on their respective elections. I've known each of them for several years. Ms. Singh Allen is a tireless worker for the community and has shown her devotion to Elk Grove in many ways. She has a strong sense of what makes Elk Grove a great place to live and has shown her commitment to diversity and inclusivity in all she does. I believe that Bobby is the right person for Elk Grove now and in the future. Mr. Spees will bring a fresh insight to the council. His many activities in the community demonstrate a continued commitment to Elk Grove. Mr. Suwen will continue to bring insight and wisdom to board discussions. I'd be remiss if I didn't also thank the other members of the City Council, Ms. Wen and Mr. Hume. Both have added their wise counsel to deliberations on city issues and have been significant voices on behalf of Elk Grove. Above all, I believe that all the members of the City Council will continue to listen to the community and will work to make Elk Grove a great place to live and to work. I want to thank all of you for your time and your devotion to the betterment of Elk Grove. I'd also like to just take a moment to thank Vice Mayor Detrick for his service over the last 12 years. It's been special to the community. So Steve, thanks a lot. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. That means a lot to all of us. Next speaker, please. Jason, are you there?
I am here, so we're just making that connection with our next caller to pull them into the meeting environment.
Thank you.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. This is Sharon Anderson. And first off, I really want to thank Steve Detrick as our outgoing councilmember from District 3, and in the same vein, welcome Kevin Spees as our incoming councilmember representing us. Couldn't have been a better transition of power. And I also want to thank Steve Lee for his job as mayor over these few years. But on the same vein, I am thoroughly overjoyed to welcome Bobby Singh Allen as our new mayor. I know Bobby, and I know she'll do an awesome job. She cares so deeply about the community. We share that trait. And then I'd also like to congratulate Darren Suwen for once again having, being able to represent his district. And that's all I have to say. Let's go Elk Grove. We love you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next speaker, please.
And with that, Vice Mayor and Council, I believe that is our set of speakers under Item 1A.
Okay, so we'll close public comment. And council deliberation, do I have a motion?
So moved. Councilmember Hume.
Second.
Do we have a motion and second? All those in favor, say aye.
Before we go too much further, Vice Mayor, what I'm going to ask is that we just do a roll call vote. It's one of our requirements when we are in the teleconference environment. And so I will start out the roll call vote, and just for those of our new officers that are getting ready to come in, this is a vote still of our standing council. So I'll be calling you out by name, and we'll go from there. Councilmember Wen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suwen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee is absent. That will pass 4-0 for the certification of the November 3rd, 2020 general municipal election.
Thank you, Jason. And we move to the next item.
And with that, for the next item, and I appreciate, Vice Mayor, that you'll be handing over the role of presiding officer to our mayor, Bobby Singh Allen. And we will be rolling in to that first item, which is recognition of our outgoing officers. And I'd like to open the floor to our city manager, Jason Bearman.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jason Bearman, City Manager. I'm going to just offer a few comments before we proceed on this. First of all, we did recognize former Mayor Steve Lee at the last meeting, so this time I'll really limit my comments to former Vice Mayor, or Steve Detrick. And Steve, just to offer a few comments, and then we'll move on with a few other opportunities for some recognitions. You know, Steve was elected to Elk Grove City Council in 2008, when the city was very much still in its infancy, having been incorporated just eight years prior in 2000. So Elk Grove was really just kind of coming into its own, really maybe acting somewhat like a teenager, trying to figure out what it wanted to be when it grew up. Since then, the city has really matured as an organization. It's developed a regional identity and a reputation that continues to grow and improve. The city is now on solid financial footing, and there's much to look forward to in the coming years. The city has been busy building amenities, infrastructure, and programs and services to meet the needs and wants of our community. And Steve, you've played a critical role in the progress that the city has made. I should know, however, that Steve was someone who always appreciated that he was part of a team, a team of elected officials, team of staff and community members. And he was always quick to give credit to those many team members. It has been a true honor and privilege working with Steve for the past five years that I've been here. And I know staff throughout the organization have truly enjoyed working with him. I appreciate his support. So Steve, thank you for your service to our city. You'll be missed. As a send-off, staff has worked with councilmembers to prepare a brief trip down memory lane in the form of a slideshow. So I'd ask our city clerk to go ahead and play that.
Man, just give me a moment as I'm kind of navigating systems here.
Thank you, Jason. That was very special and really appreciate all the kind comments. Very, very special. Wow, Jason, that's very, very touching. Bringing tears to my eyes. I'd love to get a...
Well, Steve, thank you. I'd like to maybe turn the time over to our new mayor, Madam Bobby Singh Allen.
Wow, what a wonderful tribute. Thank you, everyone. This is your mayor signing on for duty here. Pleasure to be here with all of you. You know, this has just been a wonderful tribute, and it's so wonderful to see all of these photos, a true trip down memory lane. But before I share my thoughts and reflections on Steve's 12 years of service, I'm going to call on each of my colleagues to share some of their thoughts. So I'll start with Councilwoman Wen.
And pardon me, I'm sorry, Mayor Singh Allen. I did just want to note, we actually do have some words from some of our local elected officials.
Oh, wonderful.
We do have some of them online if you'd like to hear from them first.
Absolutely. Let's hear from them first.
So what I'd like to do is invite Supervisor Don Natoli, Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Don, I'd like to give you the floor.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jason, and certainly good evening to all of you. I'm delighted to be able to join you. If this were a different time, I think you all know I'd be very pleased to be in the chambers or with you to present this personally to Steve. But before I offer just a few words here, I wanted to congratulate Mayor Singh Allen and certainly Councilmember Spees and Councilmember Suwen on your elections. And I know you'll serve the city well and certainly look forward to, you know, working with you in the months and days to come. So congratulations to each of you. And I wanted to say, Steve, that it's just been a tremendous opportunity throughout my, a good portion of my career to have worked with you and to have known you for more years and obviously served on the council. And I do have a proclamation that will get to you, but without going into all the wherewithal's, I would just do on behalf of certainly the county of Sacramento, and I think I could speak for my colleagues in this respect, that we've enjoyed the opportunity certainly to work with you in the capacity which you've served, you know, joining with us in many of the boards and commissions. But certainly your work on behalf of the City of Elk Grove, as you and your colleagues have, you know, put your efforts forward to make sure that certainly the residents and citizens of Elk Grove were well-served in various capacities that you've been called upon in those duties. But just in your day-to-day work as well, I know that you care very deeply about the community you call home and I think have been a tremendous representative for the city, but for the people of the city as well. And I just, I'll call one brief whereas that is in the proclamation. And I think it kind of sums it up that certainly as you bring to close your 12 years of service in a capacity as a councilmember and having served instead as mayor and certainly a number of times as vice mayor, I think you can, you know, take away certainly the sense of accomplishment, but have a great deal of pride in, and I think the love you've shown for your city, the contributions you've made in your efforts to really serve, I think, the people of Elk Grove and to work cooperatively with your colleagues and your city residents to, I think, advance the betterment of the city, but certainly to make it, you know, an ever better place for people to live, to work, and to call home. And so I want to say certainly as a colleague, as a friend, but on behalf of the county of Sacramento as well, that we want to extend our congratulations to you, extend our appreciation to you for your public service, and to also to offer to you and Jan and certainly the entire Detrick family, which includes two granddaughters, I understand, as well. You know, all the best wishes for good health, Steve, for much happiness and many blessings in all the days to come. And again, thank you so much for your dedicated leadership. It's been a pleasure working with you and certainly to know you. And I know that you'll continue to serve in other capacities, but all the best to you, and thank you for your service. Congratulations, Steve, on a fine run as a city councilmember for the City of Elk Grove.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Don. You know, you've been a friend, a mentor, role model, colleague on other boards. And the duration that I've known you, you've made me a better man. And I appreciate everything you've done, both prior to me being on the council last 12 years. Thank you for everything, and I appreciate the proclamation that's being done on behalf of the Sacramento Board of Supervisors. But most of all, Don, I appreciate your friendship.
Thank you, Steve. That works both ways. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Mr. Lindgren, do we have any other public officials on standby?
And I do. It's a video message that came from one of our public officials, and I'll pull that up right now.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, this is Congressman Ami Barra. And I just want to say a hearty thank you to councilmember Stephen, as well as his wife, Jan, as Steve decides to step down from the city council position. Thank you for your years of service to the Elk Grove community, and not just as a councilmember, but your active advocacy for the sporting community. You're one of the leaders in the water skiing community and bringing attention to the importance of sports in our local community and, you know, as we raise our kids. So thank you to you and Jan for your service. I know you're not going to disappear as we continue to make Elk Grove one of the best places to live, to work, to raise a family, both here in the state of California, but also across the country. Be well and be safe. Thank you.
Hopefully that Congressman Barra may be watching tonight. And Ami, you and Janine have been very, very gracious over the last decade-plus in getting to know you both personally as well as professionally. Appreciate everything that you do for our community and for the United States as well. So thank you very much.
Great. Mr. Lindgren, any other public officials on standby?
That concludes our submittals that we received for this evening. I'm going to turn the floor over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. I will turn it over to my colleagues. Again, we will begin with Councilwoman Wen.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm getting a little bit of a feedback. Is anybody else getting some feedback? It almost sounds like an echo.
I am encountering it, and I would just encourage folks that if you are on the call to place yourself on mute if you're not the speaker on the floor, and we've got Councilmember Wen, please do proceed.
Thank you. As I was watching the video, I thought to myself, wow, Vice Mayor, you have not aged one bit. No gray hairs back then, and still no gray hairs today. You look exactly the same. I wouldn't be able to tell the difference if the picture was taken 10 years ago, 12 years ago, or yesterday. So I think we all would like to be like you and still look the same after all these years. This is a bittersweet moment for me because I've truly enjoyed working alongside with you and serving with you on this council. Your countless contributions to this city has not gone unnoticed. I'm sorry. I want to thank you and Jan for pouring your 12 years and your heart into the city, this community, and this council. It's been an honor to serve alongside with you, and I'm truly going to miss serving this council with you. But I look forward to our continued friendship. Thank you. Thank you for being this leader that we all need to see more of. Thank you for helping me along the way, and thank you for your friendship. I'm going to miss you. And our new incoming councilmember Spees has some big shoes to fill.
Thank you for those heartfelt words.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. You know, you've become more than just colleagues. You've become friends and extended family. And very, very difficult to step away from this, from people you care about. So thank you for everything.
Councilmember Hume.
Oh, sure. I see. I get to follow that. Great. I was going to start by saying that this rate, this tribute was going to be longer than his tenure as a councilmember, just to provide some comedic relief here. Steve, I'm not going to say a lot because I don't want to get choked up because I won't cry as gracefully as Stephanie did. But I'll just say this, that you've always been the same person when you were coming to the planning commission meetings in your shorts, showing off your tanned legs from water skiing, to running for council, to running reelection campaigns, to serving both on the council and representing the City of Elk Grove regionally. Your character's been intact, it's been unquestionable, and you've suffered the slings and arrows of criticisms gracefully, as gracefully as you could. And I think you've proven yourself to just be a stand-up member, not only up on that dais, but out in the community, and such a loving husband and father to your family. It's been a long run together, buddy, and I know this isn't goodbye. And so I can't wait to hang out with you in a different capacity.
Thank you, Pat. You know, we do go back a long ways, back probably at least 2005, and going through battling what's best for the City of Elk Grove. And I'm proud to have had you alongside me or me alongside you battling for the last 15 years. And appreciate all the nice accolades. And, you know, I've always tried to be true to who I am and appreciate the kind comments. I know we've had a lot of off-time that we've been able to discuss a lot of things personally and professionally outside of the meeting, so not going to belabor that. But thank you very much for the kind comments, and I love you, brother.
Oh, wow. Councilmember Swen.
Thank you, Mayor Singh Allen. Well, Vice Mayor Detrick, or former Vice Mayor Detrick, congratulations on a great run. I can't believe this day finally come. You know, we talked about it. I've dreaded it, and here it is. You've been like a big brother to me on this council since the day I started. I really appreciate your perspective on issues and the council culture that you've helped maintain. One that, you know, as Jason Bearman alluded to, is a team environment. And I think, you know, with these words tonight from my pre- to is a team environment. And I think, you know, with these words tonight from my previous colleagues, you know, you can, you can see you, you've held together quite a team. Most of all, I'm extremely grateful for the friendship we've developed over the last 12 years. You're, you know, thank you for your dedicated service to the community. I know how much, and we all serve up here, but I know, we all know how much effort, blood, sweat and tears you've put into this role. And I wish you well in your private life with your wonderful wife, Jan, your family. And a bit jealous of the additional free time you now have. But as Councilmember Hugh mentioned, you know, we definitely look forward to seeing you out in the community and maintaining that friendship. Good to miss you, my friend.
Well, thank you, Darren. You know, it's funny that the term you use is like being a big brother and you are a brother. And to be able to share the good and the not-so-good, you know, we've challenged each other. And I think together, we've made Elk Grove a better place. And, you know, you mentioned team. And I've always felt that we've had a phenomenal team because we work together, we put our egos aside, and we did what was best for the community. And I really appreciate your friendship and Denise's friendship and look forward to many, many years together as friends. And I'm not going anywhere. So I'll still be watching. And as everybody knows, I can be very opinionated. And even when it's unsolicited, I'll give you my opinions. So you guys keep up doing the great work that you've been doing. And I, again, appreciate all your friendship, most of all, more than anything. Because at the end of the day, that's what's important. We love, honored and respected. And I feel I've had that from all of you. And I cherish that. And I'll cherish those friendships forever. Thank you.
Councilmember Spees. Councilmember Elect Spees.
Well, don't undo the elect there. I mean,
Well, we still have to show our oath of office.
All right. So, hey, Steve, you know, you and I have been friends and fellow Rotarians for quite a few years now. And I've personally witnessed so many of the things that you've done selflessly for Elk Grove and for our sister city Concepcion de Taco. You know, from organizing the annual food bank services, Turkey Drive, to raising funds for houses, medical supplies in El Salvador, you know, organizing getting ambulances and vehicles down there. You know, you've not only represented District Three and the city of Elk Grove here at home, but you've represented us honorably around the world. I appreciate your trust. I appreciate your friendship, your fellowship and mentorship. Of course, I would be completely remiss if I didn't thank your best half, Jan. Angela and I truly value the time we've spent with you and Jan. And I hope you both have more time to spend together. And I'm sure Jan is listening. And Jan, you are a true powerhouse. Just remember, Steve, I do have your phone number and the gate code to where you live. I know where to find you when I need an assist. And after this pandemic is through, we'll have a toast with a great glass of wine. Hey, thank you, Steve.
Well, thank you, Kevin. Yeah, you and Angela have been powerhouses for many, many years. Obviously, you're Citizen of the Year. We've had great opportunities with Rotary to advance many quality things. And one of the decisions for me and my consideration to not run for reelection was I wanted to make sure there was somebody who had the same values and going to sit in this seat for District Three with honesty, integrity and morality. And when you finally stepped forward, I knew there was a man that could come in behind me and carry the torch and continue with the great work that's been done by the previous council. And we've become friends over the last decade. And you and Angela are a couple to be reckoned with, with what you bring as a couple for the greater good of Elk Grove. And I appreciate everything you both do. I appreciate you stepping up to be a council member, which until somebody's been in the battle, they don't know what it's fully like. And you've been in the battle. And you know what it's like to run a campaign. You know what it's like to be questioned. And you still came forward to step up for the greater good of Elk Grove. So I really, really appreciate that. But again, most of all, appreciate the friendship and look forward to many, many more years to keep that friendship blossomed. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, my turn. Yeah, I had the great privilege of meeting you, Steve, on your campaign trail, going back 12 and a half years ago. And I think some of my favorite memories was riding around in your SUV with your son, putting up signs around town. I believed in you then, and I believed in you since, and I believe in you today. You have served our community with dignity under your service, selfless service, might I add, to the city of Elk Grove. We are better, better city because of your love and dedication. I want to thank your family for sharing you with us and our community. It is not easy. We all dedicate so much of our own personal time and our families often suffer. And I want to thank Jan, your beautiful sons, grandchildren, for sharing you with Elk Grove. I know that this is not goodbye. We will continue to see you in Elk Grove. But I'm always reminded that you started this path because you wanted greater representation for your district. You wanted to have a strong voice. And I know and I hope that your district knows that not only are they in good hands, but to truly thank you because you are an amazing champion for your respective district and our great city. Godspeed to you, my friend. Enjoy your rest. You have earned this. Thank you so much. My only regret is that I didn't get to serve with you. But I know that I will see you in the coming months, soon as it's safe. Good luck. God bless.
Well, thank you, Bobby. You know, we've definitely had friendship going back through that. I've got very, very fond memories as well. Actually, I have both Jan and Brian, who was on that campaign trail with us. And actually, I've received messages from Mike Quatriocci that journey with us as well. And that was, that was a battle back in 2008. Is, as you know, and Kevin know, when you, when you've, when you're not an incumbent, it takes, it's a little bit tougher road. And till somebody's walked in those shoes, it's very hard to fully understand. And so you just finished it, Kevin just finished it. And I applaud what you've both been able to do. And Bobby, I appreciate your support over the last 12-plus years alongside with former mayor and council member Sophia Sherman, who actually helped me share an office with her, that you were very part of helping her as well during that campaign cycle. So appreciate everything that you have done on the school board as well. And look forward to watching you from your new position as our new mayor of the city of Elk Grove. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you so much. Are there any other words you want to share with staff before we move on in the agenda, Steve?
Actually, I've got quite a bit I want to share, if you don't mind.
No, please, the floor is yours, sir. You've earned it.
Since this is kind of the last hurrah, I really wanted to take time that, you know, first of all, you know, I know Mayor Lee's not here tonight, but, you know, he served six years and I want to thank him for that. And I wish Mayor Lee and his family all the best in his retirement from the Elk Grove City Council. And then congratulations again to you, Bobby, for being our new mayor and Kevin Spees for being elected to councilman. And to Darren for being reelected, for your successful bids for public office to serve our great community. And I also want to thank all the city council candidates that put themselves out there for the potential of service to the city of Elk Grove and hope that you all continue to put service above self and help serve our community now and in the future. You know, I wanted to take a moment to reflect on the past 12 years on Elk Grove City Council with all the current and past mayors, vice mayors and council members. Since I'll be retiring from my elected seat as of tonight, December 9th, I'll be passing the baton to Councilman Kevin Spees. Please continue to give Councilman Spees the same level of support that you've given me over the past 12 years. As I mentioned earlier, I've had private conversations with all my co-council members and the executive team that have been phenomenal colleagues with how much they mean to me and the friendship that I cherish from each one of them. And I want to thank my beautiful wife, Jan, or three sons, Steven, Brian, Nick, our daughter-in-law Christina, our granddaughters, Olivia, Gabriella. They all gave their full support for me to spend time away from our family to give 12 years to the city of Elk Grove in the Sacramento region. And thank you to all of our extended family and friends and community for your 12 years of support. Thank you to all our city team members, commissioners, committee members at the city of Elk Grove for the 12 years of your support and dedication. And it's been quite a journey with all you. In 2008, when I was first elected, it was the worst economic time in the history of the city of Elk Grove. Our entire city council, along with the executive team, tightened our belts and turned over every rock to save every dollar possible. I maintained a balanced budget every year with a healthy reserve. In 2011, our city had gone from worst to first in our reputation as a business-friendly community. Over the past 12 years, with the full support of our entire city council, our city team members and our community, we've accomplished many great enhancements to our city. And I wanted to point out a few of the highlights. You know, we had to join the movement program for health and fitness, the Veteran Street Banner Program, the Veteran and Public Safety Street Naming Program, Mayor's Annual Volunteer Recognition Awards Program, Key to the City Program. We developed the city norms and procedures, which we didn't have. The Multicultural Committee was created. It's now called the Diversity and Enclosure Commission. We created a youth commission. We have over 2,000 jobs with the correctional healthcare, the new and upgraded freeway interchanges, pedestrian bridge over Highway 99, improvements to the trail system across the city, the City in Memorandum Program for former elected officials and appointed committee and commission members, our Sister City Program, our Elk Grove Directional Sign Program, bringing in Costco, the largest retail single business that we have in Elk Grove, the Thin Blue Line Flight Program to show our support for the Elk Grove Police Department, District 56, our community property with the Aquatic Center, Community Center, Veterans Hall, Senior Center, Avenue for the Arts, and now coming soon, the Nature Preserve. Then we have our, for all the animal lovers, we have the Elk Grove Animal Shelter down in Old Town, the Old Town improvements that are halfway done down on Railroad Avenue, which is going to bring life down to that area. We have the Hall of Fame Program with our community partner, incentive programs for economic development to bring small, medium and large businesses to Elk Grove, hundreds of thousands of dollars raised for local nonprofits. And as what Councilman Spees brought up earlier, the homes and closes and buses and garbage truck for our sister city Concepcion de Taco of El Salvador. This was, when I reflected on this, I was thinking, you know, we have a lot to be really, really proud of. My goal over the last 12 years is to make Elk Grove as safe as possible and have the highest quality of life possible. And I'm happy to retire from office, knowing that the city of Elk Grove, its residents and businesses are better off now than 12 years ago. I feel my mission has been accomplished alongside all of you. I want to thank you again for all your years of support for me, our family and our community. And as I close my elected chapter in life, I look forward to my next chapter in life of retirement. And I wish all of you a happy, have happy holidays and a happy new year. Back to you, Bobby.
Thank you so much, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
That will advance us to Item C of our special item, which is Presentations of the Administration of the Oath of Office to the Mayor and City Council Members Elect and Presentation of the Certificates of Election. As has become something of a tradition here in Elk Grove, this is actually an opportunity that I get to sit back and watch what my deputies have been up to. Part of the process has been that with our members-elect, they have nominated folks and folks have stepped forward to want to conduct the oath of office to them. And in our interesting times of COVID, what my, all the representatives have done a wonderful job of coordinating with me in order for me to deputize them with the authority to administer the oath of office. This process was done with safety at the foremost and forefront. And with the help of technology, what I have are a series of videos that I'd like to now introduce and play for our viewing public to see the administration of oath by my various deputies to our members-elect. With that, I'm just going to be switching over my screens in order to pull up the first of these videos. And I will be starting out with the video of my deputies Ling and Ed Soon, who will be providing the oath of office to Council District One Member Darren Soon.
Hi, Elk Grove. Darren Soon here. I want to thank you all for joining us on our swearing-in ceremony. Hope all of you are staying healthy and safe these times where we're forced to do our swearing-in ceremony in this fashion. I want to quickly introduce you to my family. My mom Ling and my dad Ed are swearing me in today, as well as my lovely wife Denise and my children and my niece and nephew, as well as my brother Daryl, who's filming behind you there. So let's get going.
I, Darren Soon.
I, Darren Soon.
Do solemnly swear and/or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and/or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilman Soon.
Thank you, Mom. Thanks, Dad.
Good job.
And cheers next time.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Raise your right hand. I, Kevin Spees.
I, Kevin Spees.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
And briefly, my apologies to the viewing audience. My clicking finger moved a little bit quickly into our second oath that was conducted by Angela Spees, her husband Kevin Spees, our District Three Council member. I really do appreciate the ingenuity of my deputies as well for implementing both the wave and bringing us a little bit of the semblance of the chamber with some creative methodologies. With that, what I'd like to do is bring up one more video. And this is for my deputy that conducted the oath of office to Mayor Bobby Singh Allen. And I believe it was done this afternoon. And I'd like to introduce the video and Congressman Ami Barra. Hold on, I got to get the audio going too.
Hi.
Bobby Singh Allen.
Bear with me, everyone. It's too quick on my clicking again.
So I'm going to have to raise your right hand. Hi.
Hi.
Bobby Singh Allen.
Bobby Singh Allen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitutions of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
Let me introduce the next mayor of the city of Elk Grove.
Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me? I don't want to use the microphone. Is that good? All right. Well, thank you Congressman Ami Barra and Assemblymember Jim Cooper. I am humbled and honored with your support, mentorship, and guidance. Good afternoon to my close friends and family. We did it! Today could not have been possible without the love and support of all of you. I want to thank my parents for their unconditional love and support. I'm going to have, I'm taking this off. I'm six feet away. They called every friend and relative that we know throughout the country. My mom walked every day with her friend, Sarilla. They went and knocked on over 5,000 households just on their own. When we moved to this great country almost 45 years ago, never did we imagine that one day I would become the first Sikh woman directly elected as mayor in the United States. Mama, Papa, I hope I made you proud. To my husband and children, thank you for your support. In the last several months, you all stepped up to run the house, work on the campaign. Good catch. Can you just hold Sam if you don't mind holding him? Thank you. To cook, clean, and do so much more. At times, like a lot of women, I felt like I was being a bad mom, a bad wife, by just not being present. But you were always there for me to cheer me on and made sure to remember, to remind me, to eat even. I love you forever. I love you for always. To my amazing campaign team advisors under the great leadership of Pablo Espinosa. It's my brother right there. Thank you for taking my late night calls and keeping me focused. Your hard work paid off. I would not be standing here without your commitment to this campaign. To Pablo and my campaign team, can we give them a round of applause? I earned another brother in this journey, and he's standing right there hiding, Jake Rambo. We talked for hours on so many days. He kept me saying as well, I can never repay the love and support and just the admiration that I have for both of you. You are my family. Thank you. I love Elk Grove. We moved to this great community almost 30 years ago. It's where I raised my amazing children who attended public schools just around the corner. Where my brother owns a small business and where my parents are retired. I ran on a theme to restore integrity to this seat. I vowed to work hard every day to ensure transparency, accountability, and commitment to service above self. We have a lot of work to do in the coming year. My top priority will be to lead on an economic recovery for our city. Our businesses and working families are suffering. Collaborative work within the council and city staff will be key. Engagement from the public will also be important. We can move our city together. Are you with me?
Yes.
Today, I said goodbye to the Elk Grove Unified School District. For the last eight years, I've had the tremendous honor and privilege to work alongside great colleagues, educators like Dave, staff, students, and families. I will miss them dearly. I look forward to strengthening the city's leadership and relationship with the school district, other government agencies, stakeholders, regional and statewide leaders, and other organizations. Elk Grove, our best days are ahead of us. Everyone, everyone has a seat at the table. Whether you supported me or not, you are part of this team. And dear 38,341 residents who voted for me, thank you. Thank you. We earned the most votes for mayor in Elk Grove history. But with this great power comes great responsibility. And it's time to roll up my sleeves and get to work for the people of Elk Grove. I will be presiding over my first city council meeting this evening. And I will bring that lens that I have used for the school district, that equity lens, to make sure our highest needs residents feel like they are being heard. And that they are important and they have a seat at the table. So thank you, everyone, for being here for this intimate gathering. Happy holidays. Be safe. Be responsible. I love you all.
That's it. We have a, we have a new mayor. All right, everybody. Thank you very much for your votes. And thank you for remaining socially distanced. I'm not kicking you out. I'm just saying, remain socially distanced. Thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you. Utilizing modern technology to bring our oath of office and share it with all of you. Thank you for everyone for watching. And unfortunately, we couldn't obviously do this live with all of you, but hopefully you got to get a sense that you were all present. I will now turn it over to my colleagues to make some remarks. So I'll start with Councilwoman Wen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it is too bad that we are in this pandemic and we can't all be there in person. But I have to say, I really truly enjoyed watching how each and every one of you were deputized and sworn in and how it included your family, Councilmember Soon. It was nice to see your parents. I haven't seen them in a while. And to see them in that video really warmed my hearts and see your family as well too in that background. Thank you for sharing that with all of us. Congratulations on your reelection. I've enjoyed serving alongside with you and I look forward to another term with you and doing more great things in addition to what our vice mayor had said. He summed it up really well, but I think these next few years here, as we get out of this pandemic, we're going to be able to come out of it rocking and rolling. So I, congratulations. I look forward to the next few years with you. Councilmember Spees, we met four years ago. We walked, we knocked on doors, we phone banged, and did so much more. You've been involved in this city far more than these last four years that I've known you. And during these four years, I truly got a chance to see all the things that you've done from the food bank to Rotary to so much more. And I now get to serve alongside with you on this council. And together, I think with all the things that you've done in the city of Elk Grove, all the relationships that you've built, you're going to be a great addition to this council. I really look forward to serving alongside with you as well too. Our new mayor, Bobby Singh Allen. We've worked together in the community for years. And one of my favorite events was when we did the very first time a Women's History Month where we honored nearly 50 women in our city. It was such an amazing event. So many positive remarks from women in our city about how great this was, that we've never done anything like this. And we wanted to make it even better this year and bigger this year. And unfortunately, we couldn't do that. But that gives everybody a snapshot of the things that we can do together. And for the first time, this city will have two women on this council. And I look forward to doing more amazing things alongside with you. Congratulations to all three of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for those kind words. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First time saying that in a long time. I want to first thank Councilmember Wen for not crying this time so that I can get through these comments without choking up again. I've spoken to each one of you individually offline to express my congratulations. I'm stoked to have you back, Darren. You know, we serve well together. Kevin, I've been excited to watch you kind of raise your visibility in the community and sort of put in the hard work needed to support you know, those who are maybe struggling both through your work in Rotary as well as the food bank and the other nonprofits that you support. And Bobby, I'll just say this, or Mayor BSA, or whatever, we figure out, we're going to call you. That's the second time today that I heard you give that acceptance speech. And it was just as moving the second go around. And so I'm looking forward to having new leadership at the helm in the center square. And I think we just keep, we keep building a great team in Elk Grove and doing great things for the community. And so I look forward to continuing that. And I just want to say kind of to echo what Councilmember Wen said, or maybe it was Councilmember Detrick, outgoing Councilmember Detrick. It just, you're robbed of something by us not being there in person to really pay homage to the moment. So darn this COVID thing anyway. But congratulations to each of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hume. Councilmember Swin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations on your election. And Councilmember Spees, congratulations to you as well. I want to thank my former and current council colleagues, Hume and Wen, for those very kind words. It's glad to be back. And I want to thank the voters of Elk Grove, my family, for the opportunity to continue serving in the community. It's truly a privilege to serve and be a part of the leadership shaping our city. We've got many irons in the fire and I look forward to continuing work that we started, some of it before my time on this council, as well as any of the new efforts that will arise with this new team. I'm thankful for the opportunity to continue with my councilmembers Wen and Hume. And I'm excited for the new beginnings with Mayor Singh Allen and Councilmember Spees. These are challenging times. And while we know a vaccine is imminent, normalcy and recovery feel like a mile away. And we'll need to keep working together as a council, as a city, both its government and its people, to get through it all. But we are a resilient city and I have no doubt that we will. I'm excited and look forward to serving with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Soon. Councilmember Spees.
All right, you know, it's truly an honor to be on the city council. And I am so thrilled that for each and every one of you, I think we've been friends first. And I think that's really going to be helpful. I look forward to working harmoniously with all of you to keep Elk Grove safe, clean, efficient, and prosperous. You know, I got a lot of people to thank for me being here. Of course, the voters, and there's also so many more that have volunteered, phoned, all that stuff. And I believe I've already thanked each of them personally and individually because their efforts were critical. I do, however, need to thank the campaign manager of my life, Angela, for her love, her undying faith, and of course, her endless energy. If any of you know Angela, you know that she is endless energy. With that, I'm ready to get started. Thank you.
Well, congratulations first of all to Councilmember Soon and Councilmember Kevin Spees and to all of us. I mean, it's such a rare day that I can proudly say that I get to serve alongside my friends. I have tremendous amount of respect for each and every one of you. I've known, I think, Councilmember Hume the longest, but it's a close second with Councilmember Soon. We met about the same time, but we forged personal relationships at different points in our lives. But I have the utmost respect and love for all of you. And that's what's going to get us through these challenging times. We come from different walks of life, different ideologies. But at the end of the day, I know that you are all amazing public servants with the best interest of Elk Grove at heart. And that is what will sustain us through the good times and the bad times. I look forward to serving alongside each of you. I am honored and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work. So here we are. We will be stronger together. Let's get our work done. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. With that, we will move on to the next item.
And that first order of business with the reorganization of the city council is to finalize up the names and titles here, and that is the reorganization of the city council by motion selecting the vice mayor.
All right. Normally, I would turn it over to colleagues to make a motion, but selfishly, I'm going to kind of want to make the motion right now. And I would be honored to make a motion. If she's willing to serve, I would like to nominate Councilwoman Stephanie Winn to serve.
Second, second, I want a second in here. Second, second.
I'm hearing a lot of fighting for second, but for the record, I heard Councilmember Hume.
I, I accept and thank you, thank you so much. For the first time, we've had two women on, on the council and for the first time ever, we have a woman that is a mayor and the woman that is a vice mayor. So a lot of exciting times for us here. Thank you outgoing Vice Mayor Steve Detrick for everything. Thank you to my council colleague here, both Hume and Councilmember Soon in the back fighting over it. I appreciate you both. I look forward to serving into this, this role here.
Okay, so procedurally, we have our motion and a second. So we're going to take our vote here. So we do have Councilwoman Winn who is interested. So Jason, do you want to do the roll call?
Here we go for the roll call vote. Just be ready, everyone. It'll be a bumpy for the next couple of votes as we get used to the new ordering going on here. But starting out with Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
I don't know. I only seconded it for discussion purposes. I'm going to have to say, yes, 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 yes.
I'll carry on to Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Absolutely aye. Thank you.
For Stephanie Nguyen as our vice mayor, that will pass 5-0. So with that, we have our new sitting council. And so as we proceed down the process, we'll probably see some folks leaving our team's environment. But with that, we'll also in essence be taking a roll call as we move into section two, which is the approval of the remainder of the agenda.
All right. Item two is considering moving the closed session of section three to be heard after the regular items of section 10.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we will move with a roll call vote.
And that roll call vote adjusting again, just based on, on our newly recognized positions, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes.
That'll pass 5-0. So with our agenda, that will advance us to section four of our agenda. But we have no presentations of announcements for this evening, which will take us promptly to section five, our public comment. Participating members of the viewing audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those participating members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. Mayor, vice mayor, and council members, I do have 10 members of the public that have requested to call into the meeting. And our staff will start that process of pulling those speakers into the meeting environment. And besides that, we have not had any written comments that were submitted under general public comment. One of the speakers who did sign up for this evening did submit a video that they wished to have accompany their comments they're providing this evening. That video was received earlier today, which is not in accordance with our policy, which requires submittal of any third-party items to go on our audiovisual systems to be received 24 hours in advance. So it would be at the, at discretion if you wish to view that, but it is not submitted in accordance with the city policy. With that, I will see if we have our first speaker queued into the meeting environment and we can go from there.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Dr. Firdo Sheikh. What better day than today to talk about the swamp attacks on ex-mayor Steve Lee? I must say, this pathetic display of friendship reinforces that this swamp and private club is there only for each other. How many times do you want to keep patting each other's backs? It's being laborious, to say the least. I'm sorry, Bobby, to make your first day in city council so painful for you, but I don't think any of you did justice to say thank you to Steve Lee. So here I go. What better day, Steve Lee, for being, for you being such a dignified, amazing, and great leader, what a role model to all minorities. Your resilience to combat this swamp and dirty politics with quiet dignity is absolutely admirable. You have demonstrated that winning was less important to do than to do what is right, and that is ultimate victory. Steve Lee, I was so devastated when Bobby Allen, I will not call her Singh because I'm ashamed that she's an Indian, and her associates not only falsely called me a criminal, but circulated my photographs with your wife and yourself, hoping to smear filth on your character. Well karma slapped them because my case got dismissed. And Bobby Allen, I tried to teach you leadership and told you that slandering based on allegations is not leadership and is highly inappropriate to attack private citizens. But you have demonstrated to me that you cannot comprehend. And sure enough, you said, I will not do what is right because I do not want to let down my friends. Well, it's obvious, isn't it? The display of friendship today reinforces to the people of Elk Grove that you are here for each other. None of you are here for the people of Elk Grove because the Maung community is still suffering, Bobby Allen, because of the damage you have done. Sorry, Steve Lee, I'm sure the slander didn't flow in some weak minds and the words, but those words will be bear crap to bear as they got it by spreading horrific lies. Bobby Allen and associates are taking many skeletons into their closet. Hope when they sit back and reflect, they will see their truth and ugliness for what it is. This is not leadership. I am sick and nauseated by this display of friendship and scratching each other's backs. Hope everyone who tried to slander me will eat their words because guess what? I am proud to be an associate of Steve Lee, much rather be as an associate for his family than any of you today on that city council. Because each of you have manifested malicious greed for power. There is nothing appealing about how you talk about what you want to do to Elk Grove because I have watched painfully the last four months that you have continued to ignore an entire Maung community and walked all over them. You have attacked Khan Lee and innocent kids for his own sake.
All right, your time is up, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Time is over. Thank you for your public comments. We will move on to the next caller, please. Thank you for calling.
And staff will pull in our next speaker under general public comment.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Tonight, I want to talk about one of the biggest lies told to the public by incoming Mayor Bobby Singh Allen during her mayoral campaign. And that's the lie surrounding former Mayor Steve Lee's interviews on home media. You see, it's not about the lies of the former mayor that offends me, although I'm sure this is the way he would like to twist it. It's the fact that you, Bobby Singh Allen, used those lies to mislead the public on what was really going on between you and the Maung community. And let me just say that again. You misled the public on what was really going on between you and the Maung community. Not you and the former mayor, but you and the Maung community. Now, back in August, you wanted to jump up a story about how the former mayor was telling the Elk Grove public and the Maung community two different stories regarding allegations of him having his associates harass women. You claimed that what the former mayor was telling the Maung community through Maung news was inconsistent with, with what he was telling the Elk Grove public and that it was he who was misleading our Maung community and that this was the reason why the Maung community was upset with you. Miss Singh Allen, your racism knows no bounds. When I watch the news, I can assure you, it's in English. The first time I was exposed to racism against my culture was through an English-written news article. And it might surprise you to know this, but I speak English, far better than I speak Maung. And I can assure you that many in the Maung community are in the same boat. Now, to back up your story, you claim that you had the former mayor's phone interviews translated by a court-certified interpreter. And you made these claims on social media and you made these claims during a press conference on September 15th. Well, guess what? I spoke directly to the owner of the firm who was responsible for the translation of these phone interviews. And our conversation revealed some very interesting points, one of which is that you knew as early as August 31st that there is no such thing as a court-certified Maung interpreter in the state of California and that these translations were not court-certified as you claimed them to be. Yet you decided to actively pursue misleading the public on its validity anyways to suppress the voice of the Maung people. I have the actual email correspondences between the firm and your campaign manager, in case you'd like to see. So you proceeded your campaign with racist statements about an ethnic community and then you attacked a private citizen and a concerned mother in your school district on your Facebook page. It's unfortunate that over 38,000 voters weren't able to see through your lies and deceit, but what's done is done. And I hope you will do a much better job serving as mayor than you did as a school board trustee. Welcome to the hot seat.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller.
And staff will be pulling in our third caller under public comment. We had 10 total.
Caller, you may, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Pedro Harkeen. This is a general comment. I'm a resident of Elk Grove for the past 17 years. And I just wanted to call in and congratulate Mayor Singh Allen. And we are excited to have her as our mayor. And I have known her for quite a long time and I've seen her, her work through the Elk Grove Teen Center and the food bank and, and, and the school board. And I just wanted to say that we are lucky to have her as our mayor and look forward to great things. Thank you. That, that is all.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Mayor Singh Allen, you recently made a post on social media stating, when it comes to good governance, we need to focus on restoring transparency and accountability to the mayor's office. I will schedule a retreat with our city council members and identify goals and objectives for our city, as well as conduct community town halls to hear directly ideas and concerns from Elk Grove residents. Since June of this year, you haven't given a damn about how you insulted and continue to disparage my Maung community through denial and deflection of your racist comments and by diminishing our concerns on numerous occasions. Do you remember what you said, the words that led to three protests against you? You refer to our Maung cultural existence and familial clan system of governance as a controlling and intimidating system used to attack and silence women. Has it not been apparent to you that a group of Maung women has led the charge against you for the racism you spewed at our people? Shouldn't we, a group of Maung women, be heard and our concerns addressed instead of being ignored by you, bullied by your supporters, and our voices silenced? It's not the Maung clan system doing this to us. It's you. It's not the Maung patriar questioning you as you would like to believe in order to fulfill your narrative of oppression and silencing by Maung men. It's Maung women calling you out, Maung women who are not oppressed by the shackles of victimhood and intimidation. When are you going to face these concerns and give them the same racial equity and justice you proclaim to personify? When are you going to genuinely apologize to my Maung community without blaming someone else? Leaders inspire accountability through their ability to accept responsibility before they place blame elsewhere. Accountability, transparency, and integrity for a change, right? It's unlikely you make any amends as your pattern of behavior proves it. Now that you're Elk Grove mayor, be mindful you serve the people of this city. We will be keeping you transparent and accountable. Let's see that integrity you pump into the case so loud and proud on full display. And just so we're all clear and it's understood, Mayor Singh Allen and councilmembers, this is not a threat nor is this harassment. This is residents practicing their First Amendment rights, addressing their concerns through city leaders elected by the people. Mayor Singh Allen, I'd like to leave you with this parting gift, a quote by the amazing Booker T. Washington, because it makes me think of you. A lie doesn't become truth, wrong doesn't become right, and evil doesn't become good just because it's accepted by a majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
And staffers.
Caller, you may go ahead.
There we go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham. Vice Mayor Detrick, thank you for being the most responsive council member during council meetings. I wish I had more time to thank you. You have set a good example and I wish all of the council members, including the two new ones, would be as responsive as you have been to the residents. Good luck. The council needs to block staff from issuing cell antenna permits to AT&amp;T and Verizon because the companies have failed to satisfy the insurance requirements according to the master license agreements. Meanwhile, the staff, fully informed about this issue since May 27, have blown it. Staff has concluded that the insurance is complete. Every insurance policy has a section on exclusions. The exclusions are what types of loss or harm are not covered by the policy. On May 27, I wrote to the entire council and staff and informed you about this problem. According to Exhibit D of the master license agreement, the required general liability coverage shall contain no special limitations impairing the scope of coverage afforded to the city, its officials, employees, or volunteers, et cetera. I said that the carriers will not have that coverage or documentation of it. That was May 27. On June 3, I sent that email again to staff. On June 4, Mr. Murdoch acknowledged receipt of my message. On October 7, I sent that email again to staff. On December 2, I sent that email to the entire council and staff. And again on December 5 and since then. There was never any substantive response from staff or any member of the council. On November 12, Jeff Warner told me, quote, "At this time, both AT&amp;T and Verizon are in compliance with all insurance and bond requirements specified by the MLA," end quote. Until you read the exclusions, you don't know what the policy covers and what it doesn't. Staff is about to make a big mistake and issue more cell antenna permits. The city attorney has ignored the issue and not done anything about it. The city uses a third party called ITS, Insurance Tracking Service, to evaluate the carriers of insurance. As Selena at ITS explained it to me on Monday, ITS tracks only the terms of the agreement that the city asks it to track. Apparently, the city did not ask ITS to track the exclusion. The word exclusion is not used in any of the insurance records that the city clerk sent to me. So when ITS tells you, yes, the insurance coverage is complete, that means subject to the limitations of what the city has asked ITS to track. Jim Ramsey, the city's risk manager, failed three times to answer these questions. Have you seen the complete insurance policies? Have you seen the exclusions in each policy? Are the exclusions in an insurance policy typically shown in the certificate of insurance? Council directs staff to not issue the permits until and unless all the insurance requirements are met. That entails looking at the entire policy, including the exclusions. Thank you. That's the end. Please respond tonight, council. Please speak briefly. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Many things have transpired over the course
Many things have transpired over the course of several months that hit close to home for me. There is a need to revisit this again because it was never properly addressed in the first place. There are three things I want to address this evening about our Hmong community right here in Elk Grove. First and foremost, let's talk about the evening of the mayoral debate on September 29. After the debate, Jake Rambo drove recklessly into a group of protesters trying to intimidate them. There are many witnesses that saw this. When Ms. Foster tried to report it to Lieutenant White, he discouraged her from filing a police report, citing it to a video footage that did not rise to the level of a crime and closed the incident. He also indicated that he knew Jake Rambo. What made this interesting was that when a copy of the video footage was requested from Elk Grove Police Department, the staff handling the request said there were no footages. Fortunately, the incident got reopened and currently being investigated. So can anyone explain to me why there is a discrepancy here? I smell corruption within the Elk Grove Police Department, and who knows, likely within City Hall as well. Now, on to Bobby Singh Allen. If you can so kindly please unblock many of your constituents that you've blocked, that would be greatly appreciated. As the mayor, I'm sure you don't want to be accused of blocking anyone like former Mayor Steve Lee, do you? I also ask that you make your personal page be public now that you have taken office so you can be transparent with your constituents. After all, you are a public official, and your personal page has been used as such to promote your position. As you previously said, and I quote, "I am doing this to let everyone know they have a seat at the table, no matter how small or large their checkbook, their ideology, their culture, or religion." You also said, "I am doing this to restore integrity and honesty to the seat." So I hope you keep that integrity and be transparent on the seat that you're in. And lastly, I would like to request that council members and Mayor Singh Allen establish an official date for the city of Elk Grove to celebrate Hmong New Year. The Hmong don't have many holidays that are celebrated on a yearly basis, but our New Year is the biggest event. Those from far and near will come together and enjoy time together. Generally, Hmong New Year is celebrated in November. However, here in the United States, it celebrates between September and December, depending on location. Elk Grove is rich in culture and diversity. This should be a stepping stone for showing the Hmong community that you value our existence. With all that said, I would like to end my comment with this. The Hmong community is watching you. We're here and we aren't going anywhere. And if I and many others have to keep calling at every city council meeting until something is done, we will. If we have to be the next Mark Graham, we will. Bobby Singh Allen, you have 90 days to fix the division you've caused and address the corruption in the police department before every call notice goes up. This is just the beginning. Have a blessed 2021.
Thank you, caller. Next caller.
We'll be pulling in the seventh caller under general public comment.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Awesome, thank you. Hi, this is Selena Enriquez. I'm vice chair of the Elk Grove Youth Commission. I have a couple of things I'd like to address. I'm not nearly as passionate as other people have been tonight, but first off, congratulations, Mr. Spees and Ms. Singh Allen. I am thrilled to have some new people on here getting some new change out, and you know, people who I'm very hopeful will bring positive change to the world. Some things I'd like to address. The youth commission has been discussing updating our ordinance, and it has been pretty stressful. The council has talked about adding more members onto our commission. I understand the motivation behind this is to allow more opportunities for youth in our community. But if we keep pretending like the youth commission is just an opportunity grab and not an actual means organization dedicated to helping youth in our community, we're not going to be able to create that meaningful impact that we need to. We discussed how we want more middle schoolers and more youth on our commission, and that's not something that youth commissioners can handle. The reason we keep cycling out of juniors and seniors every year is because of the fact that the council repeatedly chooses older members over younger members. I'd like to see some younger people on the commission. That's how we can get people in there for longer to make greater change. So I'm really passionate about this, and I've been honestly advocating that we keep the youth commission at 10 members for the past year and a half, I believe. And it feels like I'm not being listened to, especially as vice chair. This is really important to me, and I'm really hoping that like my words are taken into consideration tonight because at some point it becomes too many chefs in the kitchen. For example, San Francisco Youth Commission has 17 members, and they have a way larger population than we do. At this point, I believe that if we just get dedicated people onto our commission that we can make a valuable change and also appeal to younger groups of children without having to, you know, scare so many people. But other than that, I'm very passionate about this, and I hope that Mr. Spees and Ms. Singh Allen are also very interested in making sure that we're keeping in contact with younger members of our community and especially youth. Because when it comes down to it, online school is really hard lately, and we need to be keeping up with mental health and equity issues year-round, but especially during this time. So I'm open to any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you, caller. We can't deliberate because it's public comment, but thank you for your time, and we will follow up with you respectively. Thank you for calling in. Next caller.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, before I begin, I sent in a video earlier, and I'd like to request the council for approval to show, if that's okay.
Mr. Lindgren, can you please restate the city policy on this?
Certainly. Four submittals from third parties that wish to use the city's AV equipment during the broadcasts of our meetings. We do have a city policy that requires such submittals to receive 24 hours in advance. This submitted video came in today, so it was within the 24-hour or past that deadline of 24 hours. We would have needed to have received it yesterday, so it would not fall into the auspices of the policy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lindgren. So I invite the caller to submit the video for protocol during our January meeting, but you are free to make public comment. Thank you.
Okay, so due to the nonapproval, I would like to request that the video be scheduled for the next city council meeting during general public comment. That will cut my comments short tonight. Mr. Hobbs, for the record, I would like to put everyone on notice. I am requesting that anyone who has been blocked by any of you on any social media accounts beyond Block ASAP, citing Faison versus Scott Jones. Furthermore, I would like to inform you that I am still waiting for the information requested on PRA reference number R000605-102120, referring to the footages in which was viewed by a sergeant in the Elk Grove Police Department as stated on report number 20-006129. I'll leave you all with a quote tonight. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, good evening. This is Mimi De Vil. I'm calling to offer congratulations to Mayor Bobby Singh Allen and also to Vice Mayor Nguyen. And especially notable is receiving the most mayoral votes in Elk Grove history. Wow. Thank you for saying that we all have a seat at the table. We are looking forward to that. We are very appreciative of your support in the Black community and the website in general. And we look forward to the new beginnings. Thank you so much. And please remember to ignore the haters and ring that bell when the three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
We're just patching through callers, and I just wanted to give staff a heads up. I got another request to speak that came in in the pipeline, so that should be over and in the queue.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, City Council Members Soon, Nguyen, Hume, and Spees. This is Dr. Jaclyn Chung, also known as Jax. I am speaking to you today not as a newspaper editor, but as a private citizen. And first of all, congrats to Mayor Singh Allen and City Council Members Soon and Spees on winning your respective races. I'm really excited to see what this city council can do. I've been listening to the onslaught of criticism during these public comments, and I gotta say, this gets old fast. And I felt personally harassed by public comments. You know, and I just want people to know that this harassment is still ongoing. Clearly, you can see that. What people don't know, my house was egged last week. I filed a police report. And I am actively fighting breast cancer. So I am personally requesting that the city council review public comment policies so that these public comments can't be used, you know, as a means of harassment. And I'm not just talking about of the city council. I'm talking about private citizens like me. I've been taunted on these calls for being 3% mom, you know. As one of the women who has experienced harassment and still is, I still want to say something to all of Elk Grove. We are better than this. This is the time to come together as a community to heal. Our new mayor has said that everyone, whether they voted for her or not, has a seat at the table. So that's your chance to come, sit at the table, and have a conversation. If you focus on harassment and hate, you won't accomplish anything. Hate has never solved a single problem in this world yet. However, communication and kindness and compassion and mutual respect often mean the difference between war and alliance, divorce and marriage, and hopelessness and faith. So today, on this beautiful day, I invite all of you to join Mayor Singh Allen, as well as City Council Members Nguyen, Soon, Hume, and Spees, and have a seat at the table. Let's do this, Elk Grove. Let's heal, and let's move forward and place a new banner of change on the foundation of our city. Let's work together as brothers and sisters and unite our city. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Mr. Lindgren, do we have any other callers?
And I believe we do. There was a caller that signed up while we were taking public comment. I just want to make sure I'm coordinating with staff, and we've got that caller getting pulled in.
Thank you.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, the council members. My name is Jake Rambo. I know many of you. And I first want to begin by congratulating Councilman Spees. You truly have, you and Mayor Singh Allen truly exemplify the best of this community, and it is fitting and proper that you are serving as council members tonight. Like Councilmember Spees and Councilmember Hume, this has been my home since the beginning. In 1998, I was a 20-something-year-old kid who got involved in a cityhood campaign because I thought we could be so much more. And I have never been more filled with hope for the future of our community than I am tonight as I see this new council seated. And so I'm excited for the five of you, and I'm excited for Elk Grove. There's always some darkness, and unfortunately, you know, there continues to be some darkness. You know, there's, people will continue to say what they want about others' character. I will tell you that to those who speak ill in the darkness, I recognize that the Book of Ecclesiastes talks about a time and season for everything, a time for love and a time for hate, a time for war, and now a time for peace. So those who attacked me tonight, I want to apologize. I want to tell you I forgive you. You know that in your hearts what you said wasn't true, but I forgive you because our council members, particularly our new mayor, exemplify the words of Jesus Christ in Matthew 5:9, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called the children of God." I leave you with, I think, one of the most stirring things in world history, in the history of our country. Abraham Lincoln in 1865, at his second inaugural, he ended with this charge, and I will paraphrase it a little bit, because I think it's a charge for our entire city to take heed of tonight as we heal up the wounds of an election, much as Lincoln thought to heal up the wounds of a nation racked by civil war. And that is that we as a community and you as a council, with malice toward none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right as God gives us to see the right, let us strive on to finish the work we're in, to bind up the city's wounds, to care for those who have borne the stress and hardship of the election and of these difficult times we live in, and for the widow and the orphan and those who struggle in these difficult times. May we all to do all, which may achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace and prosperity amongst ourselves as a community and with all nations. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Mr. Lindgren, does that conclude public comments?
That does conclude. I've just checked my comms. I have no other requests, and those were our 11 speakers that called in to speak this evening on general public comment.
Great. All right, thank you to all of the public comments. Our next item, please.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This is Jason Bearman, city manager. First, let me congratulate you, Mayor Singh Allen, as well as our new vice mayor, Nguyen, and newly elected council members Soon and Spees. Congratulations to all of you. I'll try to keep my report brief this evening. There are a few items I'd like to report on. First of all, the city's code enforcement team will present a virtual seminar on Zoom tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:30 to inform the community of the newly adopted short-term rental ordinance and license requirements in the city. Information or to register for the meeting can be found on the city's website. Public work staff has started construction at the City Hall building on a new wellness room. The project will convert an existing restroom on the first floor of City Hall into a wellness room for essential staff like nursing mothers who may need a private space to go during the workday to attend to personal needs. Work is expected to be completed early next year. Last call for the city's utility box beautification project. City is currently seeking proposals from local artists to beautify two city utility boxes. Artwork will be displayed on boxes at the northwest corner of Elk Grove Boulevard at Franklin and southeast corner of Bruceville at Whitelock Parkway. Artists must be a resident of Sacramento County. Proposals must be submitted only before December 17, and details are available on the city's website. The city has a new tool to better serve residents with language interpretation needs. The service will provide over-the-phone language translation assistance in over 100 languages and video translation in over 35 languages, including American Sign Language. This program is available for use by all city staff providing service to customers. A mobile device is also available for video translations at City Hall and in the field. I'd like to provide a brief update on COVID-related matters. Governor Gavin Newsom announced last Thursday that he will impose a new regional stay-at-home order for areas where the available ICU capacity falls below 15%. As many of you know, ICU capacity in the greater Sacramento region, as of today, fell below that 15%. We currently stand at 14.3%. County officials confirmed today that additional restrictions will go into effect beginning tomorrow, December 10, 11:59 p.m. It will once again close businesses like bars, wineries, personal services, and salons, schools with waivers, retail 20% capacity, critical infrastructure, and takeout, pickup, dining, and remain open. Restrictions for our region will remain in place for at least three weeks, which means the earliest the region could return to current service levels would be New Year's Day. On tonight's agenda, item 8.21, staff is requesting the council to adopt a resolution entering into a short-term use agreement with the county of Sacramento for use of the city's own facility at 9362 Studio Court for a COVID-19 testing center. Right now, there are a limited number of virus testing sites in the city and Sacramento County, and utilizing this building will help fill a need. As of December 4, there were approximately 4,300 cases in the city and more than 41,000 cases in Sacramento County. We believe that allowing utilization of this current vacant building at no cost to the county is one tangible way in which the city can assist in the fight against COVID-19. Just another reminder, this last, on Monday, November 30, Governor Newsom announced a new series of new and modified state financing programs designed to assist small businesses impacted by COVID-19, including the Main Street Hiring Tax Credit, COVID Relief Grant for Small Business Program. for Small Business Program, provide funding grants up to $25,000, as well as other programs. If any Elk Grove business needs help identifying or navigating these or other available state and federal financial resources, please contact the city's Small Business Support Specialist, 916-627-3338, or econdev@elkrovecity.org. And for the latest news and information about Elk Grove businesses affected by COVID-19, please visit elkrovecity.org/covid19biz. And finally, our Great Plates Delivered Senior Meal Program continues to help hundreds of seniors daily. There are currently 499 seniors and 18 restaurants participating in the program. More than 165,000 meals have been delivered since the program's launch on May 13. As of December 4, Great Plates has invested more than 3.1 million in local Elk Grove restaurants. A new extension has the program running until at least January 7. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you for that report. Jason, any questions or comments of the city manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a question. If I may, this is Councilmember Hume.
Yes, please.
Jason, you mentioned the more restrictive orders going into effect Thursday night. How will that affect the neighbor good holiday market that we're having at District 56, given that it's outdoors and mostly foodstuffs and gift items?
Hey, it's a good question. I don't believe it will be affected. I think they will continue to operate as they have, with social distancing and masks. There's no in-person outdoor dining. It's all kind of takeout and shopping with social distancing. So as of right now, I don't believe it will, but we can double-check with the County of Sacramento.
Great. I'll circle back with that in my council comments, but I would encourage that to be our course of action. Thank you.
Any other council questions or comments? All right, hearing none. I actually will be making a video tomorrow at City Hall as it relates to the new order for COVID-19. So that taping will happen tomorrow, and then I believe we plan to release it shortly thereafter. So I think it's really important to keep our community engaged and utilize every avenue that we have to keep them informed. So I look forward to doing that. So with that, we will move on. Unless, Jason, you have any other comments, we'll move on to the next item.
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
That will roll us into Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Excellent. We will begin with Councilwoman, well, Vice Mayor, Wen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll waive my report.
Councilwoman Hume?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will waive my meeting recap, given that it's been so long with the holiday interruption and nothing really to report. But I did want to mention, I did get out to the neighbor good holiday market that I was just asking the city manager about for last Thursday, when we had the initial lighting of the holiday tree, Christmas tree, at District 56. Great evening. Everybody had masks on and was aware and mindful of social distancing. I did see the then-mayor-elect out there as well, and so great to see her already supporting the community in that way. And I do hope that it does continue because a lot of great vendors, a lot of great gift items, and just a great way to get outdoors and have something to go and really hopefully brighten up your season. So with that, I want to read something into the record here. Recently, the County Board of Supervisors was considering an item wherein they would authorize other officers within the county to enact fines on individuals and businesses. And I just, I felt compelled to send an email, and I copied all of the council as well as executive staff on the email so that it was known that I was putting this out there, but I just want to read it into the record. "Good morning, Supervisors. I hope this email finds you well in these trying times. As a fellow elected, I can appreciate and understand the complexity and difficulty in charting the correct course to help get this pandemic under control. Unfortunately, what's before you is not that course. We need more compassion and education, not punishment. I can cite you case studies of folks I know personally who are just about at their breaking point right now. These are hardworking, law-abiding, tax-paying constituents who are at the risk of losing everything they've worked their lives to achieve. We all understand that for some, this pandemic is a life-or-death proposition, but for so many others, the medicine is worse than the disease. And we are threatening to rob them of that which they have to live for. We should be genuinely concerned about the mental health effects our solutions are inflicting upon otherwise stable individuals, because I fear we don't yet fully realize the magnitude of the victims the virus hasn't reached but affected. In closing, I understand your frustration that some people appear to be scofflaws in your eyes, but we need to recognize that we are still free citizens at the end of the day. Please don't overstep your charge and take further efforts to bring down the heavy hand of government. Instead, spend your efforts helping to encourage adults to be adults. Thank you for your service and your time." I wanted to read that into the record because this item was pulled from the agenda, and it was an emergency ordinance that would have required a four-fifths of the body to vote in the affirmative. It can be brought back as a regular ordinance that would only require a simple 3-2 majority. And I just wanted to be on record not supporting that course of action. People are struggling hard enough as it is. I don't think we need to be even more punitive. And so what I ask of my colleagues is if there is council consensus to put a placeholder item on our next agenda to discuss some vehicle or avenue in which to codify the city's mission, vision, and values relates to the pandemic and to these restrictions that are causing so much uncertainty in our community. And I'm not sure exactly what that would be at this point, but I would be willing to work with staff to bring something forward if there were consensus to do that.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Stu. I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume, thanks for bringing this to our attention. A couple of things. One, I wanted to clarify, the ordinance was brought forward not by the supervisors or staff, correct? It was, I mean, the public health official? Who was it brought forward by, I guess?
I believe it was brought forward by Mr. Bealston.
The county public health person. Okay, I'm just, I just wanted-
We have to double-check, but that's my understanding, unless Councilmember Hume you know otherwise.
I don't know otherwise, no.
Okay. I just, I was just curious. But, and then I'm happy to entertain that as well. I'm just curious, but I mean, what about during the council retreat? Or is that not soon enough? Maybe want to bring it back sooner?
I would like to bring it back sooner. And again, this is not earth-shattering stuff. I'm not talking about flying in the face of common sense, just the opposite, of kind of taking a stand on what we think is appropriate behavior and showing support for, you know, our mom-and-pop businesses that are struggling, and some of whom will not survive this pandemic with nothing to do with any sort of illness.
Yeah. Absolutely. We definitely want to be supportive of them. It's trying times for everybody right now, including, you know, the health officials trying to keep everyone safe, so.
Any other council comments in relation to Councilmember Hume's request?
I'd support bringing that back. I think that's a good discussion for us to have. We're not quite sure where the county's at. I watched that video as well, too, Councilmember Hume, and saw that that was polled and heard the amounts of comments. Eighty-five comments actually called in. And so I look forward to seeing what the county is going to do, but I agree with you. I think we need to be ahead of the game and try to figure out what's going to be best for our city here.
Mr. Spees?
And I'd support Councilmember Hume as well to bring it back.
And I will echo the similar comments from my colleagues. I think it's a worthwhile discussion to have. So I will help guide here with the direct staff here, since we do have desire to have this item come back to us so that we can get some further information. Is there anything else you need from us, Mr. Lindgren?
I think on that front, we'll have an item, and staff will start putting something together to have on one of our, and hopefully our first meeting in January of 2021.
Great. And I believe Mr. Hume mentioned that he will work with staff to help develop that item as well, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We will move to Mr. Stu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna go ahead and waive my report as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kevin Spees?
Madam Mayor, I will yield my time.
Great. I have a couple of items that I would like to bring for your consideration, colleagues. The first one, and again, I'm gonna, I'll present them both together. The first is a COVID-19 Economic Task Force, as it relates to our pandemic. We all know that we're, you know, Councilmember Hume brought up some of the concerns. So we want to, you know, I'd like to see a task force formed, basically an ad hoc committee, that's about 60 or 90 days, with the goal of helping our businesses and our families, which we all know are struggling. And I envision this being made up of some business leaders, labor leaders, nonprofit leaders, to provide advice and resources that will help us in being efficient and providing those tools and resources for not only our struggling businesses, but of course, our struggling families as well. So I would like to create an ad hoc committee. So I'd like to bring this up as a future agenda item so we can discuss this further. So that's one. And the second one is basically a review of COVID-19. So this is a review and an assessment. We have two new members here, part of this team. So I think it might be a worthwhile endeavor to do a presentation and basically covering from March forward, what has the city done, where are we today, and what's next. And that's where we can, you know, share some of ideas and thoughts. But those are my two asks for the next City Council meeting, is one, the formation of an Economic Recovery Task Force, and the second is a COVID-19 review slash assessment.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Stu. So if I heard you correctly, an ad hoc temporary 60- to 90-day task force, that'll be primarily disseminating information and making sure people are aware of the resources available to them. Am I capturing that correctly?
A little bit. I mean, I don't want to set their goals and the end result, but an ad hoc committee that will convene, that's made up of different community leaders, that will provide us with the necessary resources and tools to be successful in our role. So this is, like I said, 60- to 90-day committee, and we will work with them. Ideally, we will get two council members to sit on that task force as well. But just an ad hoc committee to really focus and delve a little deeper to get Elk Grove back on its feet and help thrive in the future.
I'd be happy to support that. I think we've got to do everything we can. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Stu.
And just to clarify, this is to bring this item back to discuss how we're going to form this, right? Who's going to serve on it, how they're going to serve or whatnot, right, before we decide to move that forward? Okay.
Yep.
You know, there is a vaccine on the way and the shutdown. What I'm hearing from Dr. Casseri is that we're just asking this maybe the last time for three weeks. And so there are things in place on the county side, and so we can work alongside with what the county and other cities are doing. But if we can bring this back to discuss, I think that's a great idea, just to discuss what this is going to look like, and if it's even needed. If, you know, there's a vaccine that's supposed to come out later this week is what I'm hearing, and the different phases in place. So we'd have to make sure that what our ad hoc and our task force members do are going to be aligned with what the county and other cities and what's available as well, too, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And truly, because of its urgent nature, it's truly, I would envision more of a 60-day, unless for some reason, we see another round. Hopefully, we don't get to that stage, but we're still in the infancy as it relates to the vaccine and how it's going to be distributed. So, but yes, but that's what I envision, 60- to 90-day at the high end, but really 30- to 60-day ad hoc committee.
And then the review of the COVID-19, is that something you're just looking for our staff to do? Just put something together to present it? Possibly either the retreat or the next, maybe not the retreat, it's not going to be for a couple of months?
Yes, I envision a review at the next council meeting, not just for the two new members, but also for the community, so that in one council meeting, we can see, we can have a presentation and see where we've been, how far we've come, where we are today, and if we need to make any adjustments. That would open up that opportunity. But I think it's an excellent opportunity in the beginning of the year to share what the city has done, and perhaps what some of those gaps are, and discuss how we can close those gaps.
So this also-
That's the presentation.
Okay. So this also sounds like it may be aligned with what Councilmember Hume was asking for as well, too. So do you think, and maybe Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hume, that this can all be combined into one? Or do you feel like these are three different vehicles?
I don't want to-
Yeah, they're different from my perspective. The task force is specific for an economic recovery. So whether we have a vaccine or not, we are still going to be in a financial downfall, and the economy is still weak. So how can we be strong regardless of a vaccine, of coming up with plans, protocols, procedures, sharing of resources? The assessment, I really do see is different. And then what Mr. Hume is talking about, I think, is really a third item, unless you see Mr. Hume this working itself into the COVID-19 review and assessment. I almost see this as, I mean, I definitely see two very distinct, but an argument can be made if, for your portion, to be included in the review assessment. But-
So I would concur with you that I think there are three different but related branches on the same tree, right? We have the, the review would be what have we done and how have we tried to soften the impacts. What I'm asking for is a codification of, you know, who we are as a city and what we think is right and appropriate in trying to battle this going forward. And then because, and to your point, Vice Mayor Wen, even with a vaccine, that's not going to be an overnight, you know, panacea of everything that's going on. There just won't be the capacity or the bandwidth to make that happen. And so, you know, then the task force, from what I'm understanding it, having discussed it with the mayor, is more of an economic recovery and a blueprint for what a post-COVID world would look like.
Okay, yeah. I'm just, I'm hearing all this for the first time, so I just wanted to clarify, that's all. That's, I'm fine with it.
The only common theme is the word COVID. Mr. Spees?
Yes. I would support bringing your two items back.
Great. Mr. Lindgren, do you need any further direction on these items?
I will defer to the other, Jason, Mr. City Manager Berman. But I think, I'm hearing, we have a lot of information, but I'll let our city manager chime in on that.
Great.
Thank you, Jason. Yes, I believe we have enough direction to bring something back on the January 13 meeting.
All right, excellent. Thank you all for that support. And again, all of this work, I think will be great, meaningful work to not only help our constituents, but really our struggling businesses and our working families who are truly, truly hurting right now, as we all know. All right, with that, we will move on to our next item.
And that will take us to Section 8, our Consent Calendar Items.
All right. I will open the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, we do have one member of the public that expressed interest to call into the meeting. And I just wanted to state, we did not receive any written comments on the consent calendar items, but staff will be making that outreach in order to connect our caller into the meeting environment.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thanks, ma'am. Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ian Storey-Hall. I am calling about Item 8.9, where my understanding is that it says that it's going to be taking some money that's part of a police fund and be using it to create, from my understanding, what amounts to a police spy position, so that way, you know, we can be spied on even more by the police of Elk Grove. And I have problems with this, especially since right now we're about to head into the biggest eviction crisis- And I have problems with this, especially since right now, we're about to head into the biggest eviction crisis that we've ever seen because of COVID. Yet, the protections for renters and for people who are, who have mortgages is about to expire. Relief never actually came for those people, so those things just got pushed back. And then, they're gonna get hit by them. And it's of my opinion that the money from, some of the money from the police department should be, should be removed. Should be, there should be some defunding, and that should be moved over to help the citizenry of Elk Grove. And if it's gonna pay for services, it should not pay for police services. It should pay for general public services that are actually gonna help the people. And honestly, ease the load on the police as well, make it toward they're not having to respond to things they shouldn't have to respond to. That, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, caller. Any other comments, Mr. Lindgren?
And just checking my comms, and my board is clear. We have no further requests to speak on Section, or Section 8, our consent calendar.
All right, with that, I will close the public comment opportunity. And open it up for questions and comments from colleagues.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Spees. I would like to pull Item, oop, let me look again, make sure I got the right one. I would like to pull Item 8.7, Regarding the Legislative Principles and Procedures from the Consent Calendar, to consider in addition, please.
I'll move the remainder of the consent, so, Councilmember Hume.
Second, Councilmember Soon.
All right, thank you. We will be taking a roll call vote on consent agenda items with the exception of 8.7.
And for that roll call vote, I will start out, as described by the Mayor Singh Allen. But to start off that roll call vote, Councilmember Spees?
Present. Excuse me, yes.
There we go. Councilmember Hume?
You'll get the hang of it. Hi.
Councilmember Soon?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
I just need to abstain from 8.9, as my husband works for the Elk Grove Police Department, and it talks about police operations, citywide employee salary, so yes to everything, abstaining to 8.9.
Duly noted. And Mayor Singh Allen?
I.
So, the balance of the consent calendar will pass, and that will take us on to 8.7. We'll give the floor over to Councilmember Spees.
Thank you. So, you know, I wanna make sure people know, this, this idea isn't new. But due to, due to the pandemic, I think it's an idea whose time has come. So, prior to the pandemic, I believe our state workers, our valued residents were collectively making an estimated 35,000 commutes to Sacramento per day. And these trips congested roads and caused wear on street infrastructure. And reduced the time that state workers, again, or valued residents, spent at home with family. So, one fortunate benefit to the extremely unfortunate pandemic has been that our state workers have been enabled to work from home in greater numbers than ever before. And that means less time in traffic, less wear and tear on the roads, and more time with the family as a result. So, I'd like us, as part of the legislative agenda, is to encourage the state to develop and codify a stronger work from home strategy. And/or engage in the development of a state co-working facility in Elk Grove, as I believe we have previously proposed. The benefits to Elk Grove are significant, and, and I think the time has come to encourage this strongly. So, I, I would like to add that, add that, excuse it, excuse me, added to the agenda.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Soon. I, I agree, Councilmember Spees, we should create every opportunity to keep, you know, be able to have our folks working locally. I'm just, and I'm happy to support the topic, I'm just wondering. This also feels like something we should make part of our retreat, and we'll be talking more about that later on. Are you asking for it to come back separately? Or would you be wanting to entertain talking about it then, for the retreat?
Well, I think if we don't include it in this legislative agenda, in this item now, it wouldn't be included. I, I don't disagree that we could discuss it at the retreat. But I think if we don't, we'll be trying to catch up later to insert that into a legislative agenda, so.
So, Mr. Spees, can you, just for the record, what is your direct ask? What is your actual ask?
So, my ask is to add an item into the legislative agenda. Asking them to develop and codify a stronger work from home strategy. And/or engage in the development of a state co-working facility in Elk Grove.
Mayor and Council, if I may, this is Cara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Spees. We can certainly add, with Council's concurrence, we can certainly add some language in our legislative principles about teleworking. While most bills will be introduced in January, there were over, there were close to 185 that have been introduced. And there is some spot bills that are coming down that relate to state workers and telecommuting. So, I think if we add some language in our legislative principles, and then we work with our state lobbying firm, Joey Agonzo and Son, and monitor the teleworking bills, that would be one good strategy. And we could also start some initial conversations with our representatives to find out what, what's happening at the state level related to teleworking. But we can certainly add some language in our legislative principles. And depending on what the city attorney says, I could return those with that language. Or we could just write in what Councilmember Spees has requested.
So, Mayor, members of the Council, and this is John Hobbs, your city attorney. That can be added tonight if that's the will of the Council. And looking at the legislative principles, there's a number of places where this could fit. You don't need to necessarily pick them all, you could pick one or even a couple. There's economic development, environment, healthy communities, and transportation and infrastructure. And what I would suggest is, if the Council supports Councilmember Spees's proposal, that you just defer to staff to find an appropriate place for that, which could be more than one place. And if that's the will of the Council, we can add that tonight. We'll develop the specific language after the vote tonight, but we can, we can handle that tonight if that's what the Council would like to do.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. I'm a strong supporter. I think this is an excellent idea, Mr. Spees. I'm a big fan of telecommuting in general, been doing it long before COVID. Now, for all the various reasons you articulate the benefits, I definitely think that this is worthwhile. And worth exploring. So, it looks like you have some pretty solid council direction here. Mr. Berman?
Yes, I think what we'd be looking for is a motion to adopt the, the legislative principles and procedures with the language that Councilmember Spees has recommended. And staff will work to add that into the document.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion, more formally for the record.
Well, I'm certainly happy to make the motion as Mr. Berman has stated.
Second.
I heard a second for Mr. Hume. And we'll just do a roll call vote here, Mr. Lindgren.
For the roll call vote, Councilmember Spees?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Hi.
Councilmember Soon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Yes.
And 8.7 will pass 5-0 with the recommended edits as directed by Councilmember Spees.
Excellent, thank you. We will move on to the next item then.
That'll take us on to Section 9, our public hearings, starting with Item 9.1. Which is a public hearing to consider approval of the fiscal year 2019-20 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or the CAPER.
Thank you. I will declare the public hearing open.
Oh, I think we've, just before we head into that for our public hearing items, for Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, our staff members have presentations that'll be set for these public hearings and our regular items. And I'll turn the floor over to Alicia Tutt.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Alicia Tutt, your Housing and Grant Specialist. I'm here tonight with our Community Development Block Grant Annual Report, which requires a public hearing. We bring this report to you each year as required by HUD after a 15-day public comment period. The report was included as part of your packet. To briefly summarize our accomplishments, in the fiscal year 2019-20, we received close to 921,000 in CDBG funding, which we used to install 79 ADA accessible curb ramps throughout the city and continue to provide support to nonprofits such as Elk Grove Food Bank Services, Meals on Wheels, Sacramento Self-Help Housing, and Big Brothers Big Sisters. As in most years, we have not received any public comments to, up to this point. Tonight, I am asking you to adopt the report, and then we will forward it on to HUD. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you there, Alicia, for that report. Now, I will declare the public hearing open. And I'm going to open the public comment opportunity. Mr. Lindgren?
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, we've not received any written comments, and we have no speakers that have signed up for it this evening. So, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. I will close the public comment opportunity. And now, I will declare the public hearing closed. With that, deliberations, any questions or comments from colleagues?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Council, Vice Mayor Nguyen, I'll get that down here at some point. And a second for Mr. Hume, my apologies.
And with that, for the roll call vote, I will start off with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Hi.
Councilmember Soon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Yes, thank you.
The motion of the resolution for Item 9.1 will pass 5-0.
Thank you. On to the next item.
And Item 9.2 will be a series of two public hearings for consider of resolutions, calling special elections, and declaring results for Community Services District 2006-1 and Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2.
Jason, can you see my screen?
Still not yet. I think you just have to hit Share Screen. Right now, we're only seeing your portrait placeholder, so your initials are up.
Now?
Um, we're still just seeing your initials.
Let's try this one more time. Okay. Okay, it's supposed to be sharing, is it?
And unfortunately, it is not.
Okay, um, my PowerPoint is saved in the shared drive also.
So, if you give me just a moment, I'll be able to pull that up.
Thank you.
And? No, I'm looking, and I'm not seeing my screen sharing. What a fascinating, hold on.
Thank you, everyone, for your continued patience.
If it pleases the Council, I'd be willing to forego the staff report and move straight to public comments and deliberation.
Second now.
Yep, sounds good.
Oh.
It's up, but we've gotten a workaround, but we also heard from the, from the Council.
Okay, that's fine. We can, we can forego the presentation.
Oh, no, no, no. Now that it's up, I think you're on the hot seat. We'll move forward.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
My apologies for the delay. Thank you so much for your patience. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the city. I'm here this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. Just as background, the city maintains eight special tax districts, which provides funding for infrastructure or maintenance services. A project may require annexations into any of these districts, and annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a project's approval process. The annexation requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use. And then, just to provide a little bit more background for new members, the annexation process is a two-part process. So, this is the public hearing. The first part was the resolution of intent to annex, which was held on October 14th for this particular project. And all of the levies are subject to annual rate adjustments. Next slide, please. Tonight, there is one project that is being proposed for annexation into the following two districts. The first one is CFD 2006-1 for maintenance services throughout the city of Elk Grove, such as for parks and open space, pathways, medians, and so forth. And then, the second district is for the Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2, which provides for storm, stormwater drainage and runoff maintenance services. And these, these assessments will be levied in perpetuity. And more specifically about the project, it's the Laguna Springs Corporate Center project, which is a nine-acre non-residential project located southeast of Laguna Boulevard and Big Horn Boulevard. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for that presentation. We will move on to declaring the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 open. And will now open the public comment opportunity. Mr. Lindgren?
And just pardon me, I got a couple of machines open at the same time. But we do not have any members of the public that submitted written comments, nor do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item tonight.
Great. Then I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 closed. And we will do these in two separate motions here. We will do A-1. We have a, for number one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
And that roll call vote, let me make sure my audio's on, it is Councilmember Spees?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Hi.
Councilmember Soon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Yes.
Motion A1 of the Recommended Action will pass 5-0.
All right, on to the next motion, A2.
And just before we move into A2, I do just have a brief item to announce, which is the results of, from the motion of A1. Of nine possible votes, nine affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for Council consideration.
Motion A2.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for motion A2.
And again, commencing with the roll call vote, I will go to Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Hi.
Councilmember Soon?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Yes.
The resolution of motion A2 passes 5-0.
All right, on to motion A3.
Motion A3, Introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to community facilities District Number 2006-1, Maintenance Services Annexation Number 62, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
And that roll call vote, Councilmember Spees?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Hi.
Councilmember Soon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes.
And that ordinance will pass by 5-0 vote.
All right. On to the next one, which is declaring the public hearing for SWDF Annex 35 open. I will open the public comment opportunity.
And again, like our previous item, I have no written comments that were received nor any requests to speak on these public hearing items.
Great. Then I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 35 closed and request the clerk to read the results of the ballot tabulation.
Thank you, Mayor. And there is no majority protest of nine possible votes. Weighted according to proportional financial obligation for the property, nine affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved the proposed assessment, the proposed replacement adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballot. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion B.
All right, we are on to motion B.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Suwen and a second from Vice Mayor Nguyen.
And that roll call vote, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suwen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes.
And that motion of, motion B of the item 9.2 will pass 5-0.
All right, thank you. We will move on to the next item.
They'll take us on to Section 10, our Regular Agenda Action Items and Recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is Receive the Quarterly Budget Update Report and Consider a Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Budget. And I'll be looking to staff. They'll probably be pulling up a presentation item, or I'll be assisting to pull up a presentation item. See if it works on their end.
Good evening, Mr. Clerk. Can you confirm my audio, please?
I can. It's a little bit faint, though, Mr. Orion. If you can turn up the volume on your side, that would be appreciated.
All righty. Is it any better?
Much better, perfect.
Wonderful. All right. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. All right. Can someone confirm they're seeing a PowerPoint on their screen?
You're coming in clear. If you just want to move to the slide presentation mode, right now, it's kind of the design mode. Perfect.
You got it.
The floor is yours.
Greetings, Mayor Singh Allen and fellow City Council members. My name is Shane Orion, Budget Manager for the City of Elk Grove. And I'm here today to present an update on the financial condition of the city with an emphasis on revenues for funds sensitive to the COVID-19 pandemic. The prior quarterly report presented to council in September provided information about the prior fiscal year, focusing on impacts from the early COVID-19 months of March through June. This report is going to focus on the first few months of the current fiscal year since adoption of the current-year budget. Displayed is an overview of the agenda. We will begin with reviewing revenue information for the general fund available thus far in the fiscal year, followed briefly by presenting revenue info for other major funds vulnerable to the pandemic, and then concluding with presenting staff recommended amendments to the current-year budget. So, sales tax, as you're aware, is the largest general fund revenue source, budgeted at 34% of total revenues. The city received over $8.4 million of this revenue through November, exceeding expectations by over $1.4 million. The $8.4 million is reflective of taxable activity during July to September and equates to 34% of the sales tax budget. Based on historical data, the city earns only 25% of budgeted sales tax revenue during that same three-month period from July to September. Hence, sales tax is performing above historical trends at the end of the first quarter. Sales tax activity beyond September is not yet available, though due to the 60-day lag in tax filing and reporting. Based on the timing of when property values are assessed by the county and when property tax bills are issued to residents, current-year property tax revenues are not as likely to be affected by economic impacts from the pandemic. However, the city won't receive actual current-year property tax revenue information until at least January. Thus, more information on property taxes will be presented during the mid-year budget update planned for February. Based on the most recent quarterly property transfer tax report received from the county, the city has earned nearly $258,000 of this revenue from July through September, which equates to 26% of what was budgeted, which is very close to the 27% received historically over the same period. Hence, this revenue source is performing very close to historical trends at the end of the first quarter, which is good news. For utility users' tax, we've recorded over $1.3 million for July through November, which equates to 21% of the total budget. Based on historical analysis of UT revenues, the city typically receives nearly 32% of budgeted revenues over the same period of the fiscal year. Hence, this revenue source is performing below historical trends at November, at the end of November. According to the city's UT consultant, trends among the electric, natural gas, and cable industries have potentially impacted UT revenues, as I had also explained in our previous quarterly budget update in September as well. Staff will continue to monitor trends in UT revenue along with any impacts from the pandemic. The city has recorded over $380,000, excuse me, in transient occupancy tax revenues from July through November, which equates to 22% of the TOT budget. Historical data indicates that the 34% of budgeted revenues are received over that same period. So, this revenue source is performing a bit below historical trends at the end of November. The shortage in revenue is likely due to the continuing effects of the pandemic. However, analytical reports from the city's TOT consultant indicate a gradual and steady upward trend currently in occupancy rates and revenue per available room in the recent months. So, these trends indicate a potential recovery in the future with the way things are going. As expressed in the previous quarterly budget update report, nearly $2.2 billion in CARES Act funding is allocated to the city from the California Department of Finance. Staff identified a total of $720,000 of those eligible expenditures incurred from March to June of the prior year. However, after consulting with the city's financial auditing firm, it was determined that the $720,000 cannot be recorded in the prior year and thus must be recorded in the current year. So, the whole $2.2 million is being recognized in the current fiscal year. This revenue is programmed to support critical services, both in the organization and programs for the community. So to summarize, general fund revenues at an aggregate level, the overall status at the end of November is better than expected since the budget was adopted. The variances between the original and revised budget are in the Governance and CARES Act grant sources. The revised budget reflects about $539,000 in governance revenue, which is due to the rollover's anticipated strategic planning grant revenue. This revenue is received on a reimbursement basis for work performed on planning special projects, which can span multiple fiscal years. The approximately $2.2 million in CARES Act funding, I had mentioned in the previous slide, and that's shown in the revised budget column. Now, speaking briefly on general fund expenditures. Over 41% of the general fund expenditure budget of $78 million has been spent through November, which is in line with expectations. There is some savings in salary and benefit spending year-to-date of over $729,000. The savings is mainly due to several police officer and dispatch positions beyond the currently frozen positions. So this is aside from the frozen positions being vacant thus far this fiscal year. Now focusing briefly on the revenue status of other major funds sensitive to the pandemic. Revenues for many development-related funds, such as Development Services Fund, Affordable Housing, Capital Facilities Fees, are driven by building permit activity within city limits. For the months of July through September, building permit activity has been trending above expectations. 33% of the total building permits projected for the year have been received or processed through September, which is a positive sign in that area and a positive sign for revenues in those funds. The, over the four, five, first, excuse me, five months of the fiscal year, revenues for transportation funds, such as gas tax and Measure A, have been trending above expectations as well and are performing well compared to historical trends. Further information on development-related funds and transportation funds is available in the revenue summaries of other funds attachment of the staff report. To conclude the presentation, I will now review current-year budget amendments proposed by staff. Staff recommends unfreezing three frozen positions in the Police Department, one animal care assistant, one animal services officer, and one dispatcher. Assuming these three positions would be filled for the second half of the fiscal year, the combined cost is about $114,000. The salary and benefit budget savings of over $700,000 experienced this fiscal year that I had mentioned earlier is more than sufficient to cover the additional current-year costs from unfreezing these three positions. Per federal guidelines regarding local asset seizure funds, local agencies must establish separate Department of Justice and Department of Treasury accounts to track revenues and spending for the programs. These funds may not be commingled with each other. Currently, there's about $54,000 in the DOJ fund that should be in the DOT fund. Therefore, staff proposes transferring this amount to the correct fund. The Engineering Services Division has experienced higher-than-normal encroachment permit activity year-to-date, primarily from the Comcast Xnet project. The cost impact is neutral to the revenue generated, so staff is recommending increasing the spending budget by $376,000 as well as revenues. So staff recommends the council adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 budget. However, so I always want to say, I presented an overall positive story on city revenue so far this fiscal year. But I wanted to put some caution out there. With the new stay-at-home water in place by tomorrow night and the nighttime curfew being in place from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. and a potentially tiered approach or phased-out rollout of vaccinations in the coming months. Depending on the longevity of county restrictions and the timing of emergency assistance provided to residents, impacts to city revenue stemming from the pandemic are still possible in the future. So I just wanted to put that out there before concluding my presentation. But that's my conclusion. So I'd like to go ahead and turn the agenda item over to council for public comment deliberation and consideration of adopting a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 budget.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Orion. I will open the public comment opportunity. Mr. Lindgren.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, we received no written comments prior to the meeting, and I have no one in my comms that wishes to speak on this item. So that closes the public comment on item 10.1.
All right. We will close the public comment opportunity. Council comments, questions?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Before we move, I do have a couple of comments I'll make. Any council members have any questions or comments?
I'll go ahead and second for discussion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I appreciate that you did share the cautionary tale, because we are dealing with, obviously, a pandemic and there are still a lot of uncertainties. But what I'm most pleased to see as a newbie to this council is that we're doing better than expected. So that's obviously truly welcome news. On your TOT, as many of you know, I'm a statewide elected commissioner for Visit California. So that is something we monitor very closely. And the numbers that you're showing are on par with statewide trends. I see this in cities throughout California, regardless of size. So, those are consistent. And, you know, just hearing some grave news, at least from the hospitality side of the house, on getting back to what was basically a normal pre-COVID. It is definitely going to take a few years to recover. But we are seeing some positive trends, but it's definitely on hold with all of these new shelter-in-place and quarantines and different orders. It's definitely decimated one entire industry. So hopefully, we'll see that recovery. So I just wanted to just share some of those comments. And thank you for that presentation. A lot of great information, particularly as your new mayor. I'm sure Mr. Spees also enjoyed seeing this as well. So, thank you, as did everyone else. So we will move on to a motion to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2020-21 budget. Do we have a motion?
I could be wrong. I think we had a motion by Suwen and a second by Hume, but then opened the floor to discussion, but I think they did move the motion.
All right, so you have those. Okay.
Resolution.
All right, we will do a roll call vote.
With that, I will commence with the roll call vote. Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suwen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes, thank you. And with that, we will move on to the next item.
Excellent. It'll pass 5-0. That next item will be item 10.2, which Consider Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Three-Year Contract with Two Optional Year Extensions with Circle Up Education to Provide Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Training to City Staff and the Community.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Can you hear me and can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. This is Cara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Training Consultant and our RFP process. So just as a reminder, there's an 18-member Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Staff Team here at the city. A subgroup of this team oversaw the RFP process. And the goal of the RFP process is really to create a long-term training strategy. You know, we have new staff. We have staff that want to do refreshers. And we want to be really deliberate and strategic in training around topics on diversity, equity, and inclusion. So this isn't our first round of training, but we've done past trainings with Fog Break Justice, the American Leadership Forum, GARE, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, as well as independent contractors. So the RFP process, just a little background. It was out for six weeks over the summer, from June 16th to July 24th. We had a really great response rate. We had 15 proposals received, and we ultimately interviewed four firms. And in those interviews, we did a virtual training for staff as well as a Q&amp;A session. So out of that process, unanimously, the staff on the RFP process is recommending Circle Up Education for the following reasons. They really have extensive experience in training law enforcement staff. They understand legally mandated peace officer standards and trainings requirements that our police staff have to participate in. Circle Up has a lot of experience working with municipal clients. They have 22 government agencies, and 12 cities have been their past clients. They really did an exceptional virtual training demonstration for the participants. And they're a 100% minority-owned, 50% female-owned, and 50% LGBTQIA+-owned Oakland-based business. So this is the Circle Up Education Team. Like, if we were in person, we would have invited them to our meeting. But I just wanted you to be able to see the team. And one of the co-founders, Tiffany Hong, she is available and she's listening in. And so if council has any questions, we can call her into the meeting. A little bit about what the contract includes. There's kind of three main components. One is just general staff training. And these are really à la carte options. So we're not committed to any of these. We really want to work with the city staff and the consultants and the council to finalize all the trainings. But there is staff trainings up to $72,000. There's a Train the Trainer Series component if we want to identify city staff to really dive deep into these topics and get a very solid foundational base to become Train the Trainers. That's up to $24,950. And then there's some optional services that Circle Up provides. They'll provide some community town hall meetings and trainings, some workplace conflict resolution, as well as some HR consulting services. So the total contract not-to-exceed amount is $131,000. That's for a three-year period with two optional one-year extensions. That's for a three-year period with two optional one-year extensions. And one of the first things we'd like to do in 2021 is with our, the Resident Diversity and Inclusion Commission, is to do some, you know, virtual cultural awareness or cultural competency town hall trainings. We thought that might be a great way to start off 2021, and then the Diversity and Inclusion Commission could potentially do some trainings beyond that on maybe some specific cultures for the community. So staff's recommendation is that the city council receive information from staff and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Circle Up Education. And I'm available for any questions, and if you want me to get the contractor on the line, I can as well.
Thank you, Cara. All right, at this time, I will open the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, we've not received any written comments, nor do I have anyone that has requested to call in to speak tonight. As noted by Cara, if you give the direction, we can call in one of the representatives of the firm if you wish to speak with them during your deliberations, but no other public comments under item 10.2.
All right, thank you. I will close the public comment opportunity and invite council deliberations. Motion? I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Madam Mayor, that's Councilmember Suein. I'll second Councilmember Vice Mayor Nguyen's motion, but I wanted, I was wondering if we could get the contractor on the phone. I'd just like to hear about their methodology. I know staff gets to engage with them, but I'd just love to hear, you know, how they approach this work.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Maybe Nicole, if you can call Tiffany, and then I'll have maybe Tiffany give just an introduction of herself and her firm, and then if there's specific questions that you have of her, that might help. So it'll take just one minute.
And thanks again for our viewing audience, for your patience under here. We're under item 10.2, and our staff are reaching out in order to call representatives from Circle Up Education to provide a bit of an overview to the city council, and we're just making that phone connection now. Sounds like we've got them on the phone, it's just bringing them into the environment.
We do have Tiffany on the line, so you can go ahead and she can hear you.
Hi, Tiffany.
Hi, everybody. This is Tiffany, and also Tyrone Botella as well.
Great, good evening. Thank you so much for, for joining us and, and bidding on, on our, on our proposal here. I was just wondering if you could just give us an overview and methodology, how you go about your training. I'm sure you've gotten a chance to, you know, make your presentation to staff, but as, for the council and public's benefit, if you wouldn't mind giving just a broad overview of, of your methodology.
Yeah, absolutely. In terms of our methodology, especially around diversity, equity, and inclusion, is we usually start with a really deep assessment first and foremost, especially knowing that the city has already begun its work around diversity, equity, and inclusion in the past couple of years. So our first step always is to, to do a needs assessment, to identify what are the specific challenges that the city is facing, experiencing around diversity, bias, discrimination, racism, homophobia, any of the isms and challenges, both that may be interpersonal and also structural and systemic, in order to then work with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee to recommend specific services or solutions that may be related to training, maybe related to town hall or discussions, that are really laser-focused in terms of helping the city become more inclusive and equitable.
So we've done a lot of implicit bias training at the city. Is, do you, do you do those tools as well, or is there something different that you provide?
Absolutely, yeah. So we definitely do a lot of work around implicit bias, but of course, as many community members and city officials know, it goes beyond awareness after a certain point. So we definitely provide training and workshops around implicit bias to help people understand where their biases or blind spots are, but also how it specifically relates to their, their job functions and their roles and the ways in which they make decisions about programs and services within and throughout the city. And so we also provide tools around how to perhaps, for instance, address or interrupt forms of implicit bias that people may have that may result in unconscious or unintentional forms of discrimination, and also helping to develop different types of equity lenses around how do you make bias-informed decisions when it comes to things like hiring, decision-making, and things like that.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it, and commend staff for going the extra, putting the extra effort in to provide this resource.
Any other questions from colleagues? Well, I have a few comments. First of all, I am a big fan of this work. We do similar work at the Elgro Unified School District. This topic is very near and dear to my heart. So Cara, I'm one of your biggest fans right now that you had this work up, tremendous work. Circle Up Education has an excellent reputation in the community. I'm a big fan of your restorative justice practice training for school districts, so I did some research on Circle Up Education, and you definitely come with high regards, not only in the education world, but of course, city government as well. So I was very pleased to see Circle Up Education recommended this evening, but I just wanted to share some of the feedback that I've received in just doing my own research and talking to school board members in different parts of California. So, great job.
Thank you. We're really looking forward to bringing them on board.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I thought that you were asking if we had any more questions for the consultant. I'd like to add a few comments, if I may.
Of course.
Thank you. So first, I, I wanted to say, you know, this is an important topic. I'm glad this conversation continues throughout the year. Two things. First, I think that that community outreach component is, is fantastic. Second, the Train the Trainer, I know that's kind of an à la carte, and you may move some things around, but I'm a big fan of Train the Trainer simply because that knowledge can stay within the city, and then they can continue to teach not just this year, but in, in the future as well. So I'm supportive of those, certainly of those items. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spees. Any other comments or questions from council? I do have a quick question in regards to timeline. When do you, you know, assuming we all move forward here with our motion, what is, is there a projected timeline and will there be accommodations for online training in the event that, you know, the delay is much longer than we anticipate or even hope?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. You know, we're kind of approaching this work right now with the thought that it will be done virtually. So tonight's action is approving their contract. We're going to be conducting a needs assessment with Circle Up in early January, and then at two levels, kind of at my level and the city manager's level, and then we're going to be having another needs assessment with the city's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Team. We can also conduct an assessment if the city council wants to be involved in those discussions as well, but I think that we are planning on doing the trainings virtually for the foreseeable future, and so I would hope that we would have, we'd see some stuff in early 2021.
Great. All right, well, we have a motion and a second, so roll call vote.
For that roll call vote, Councilmember Spees?
Yes.
Councilmember Hume?
Hi.
Councilmember Suein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Yes.
Resolution of item 10.2 passes 5-0.
Thank you. On to the next item.
Take us to item 10.3, which is to provide direction on the 2021-2022 city council retreat.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Christopher Jordan, Director of Strategic Planning and Innovation for the city. Every two years, we come to you with the council retreat, and it is that time again. So the opportunity here is to review and update the council's goals and identify priority projects for the coming two-year planning period that this council will sit for. We're seeking a direction this evening in three areas. First, the topics for the retreat. Second, the schedule and format, and then finally, the potential date or dates that the retreat would occur on. We will be posting more information once those decisions are made, along with a survey that we're putting together in the coming weeks at the URL that's up on the site here, elgrocity.org/retreat, and this will be hosted under the City Council section of the website. The link is active right now, but there's no content on the page. We're still building that out, and we'll fill it in with your direction from this evening. So moving right in, actually, before I do that, I do want to mention the retreat will be professionally facilitated. We've hired a group facilitator out of management partners who will be helping us, and when we get to the topics in a moment, there's one in particular that they'll be helping with a portion of that. But generally speaking, the topics are presented from staff and our technical expertise. We do bring in outside assistance where it makes sense. So for the topics, and we've put a list together that's in your staff report for consideration, certainly there may be others you want to look at. I'll run through them briefly here for purposes of the presentation. First off is the mission, vision, and goals. You may be familiar with these, but these were last updated two years ago, essentially reflect what the city's mission is and our vision as organization, and four key goals that we work at across the organization to implement. And that implementation primarily happens through the high priority projects, which are a set, a list, and these are in your packet this evening. I won't go over them in detail, but they are major items, things like the Cameron Road Extension and Widening Project, Wildwood Parkway Interchange, special studies we may do, like the Cameron Road Urban Design Study, and a variety of other topics and services and activities that go on in furtherance of the mission vision. The next topic would be the budget. This would be a more in-depth, detailed presentation for our budget group than what you had this evening on the mid-year or the partial mid-year. This would go into more of a five-year trend forecast for certain fund lines, look at what our long-term obligations are and other considerations that may be out there. It's particularly relevant when we talk about the high priority projects. The next item is governance in the age of districts. The idea here is as we've moved from a, from a district system to a by-district system, there are interests there that we want to look at in terms of how we as an organization operate, what council's concerns may be there, and how that'll operate. So this will be a topic area that actually our facilitator has great experience in presenting it. They've got a set of information, materials that they'll go over and help facilitate a discussion along those lines. The next up is the Smart City Project. This is one we talked about at the retreat last year, and we're getting moving on it. You'll see a contract come up at a future council meeting for professional services to assist with it, so we'd be able to dive into this project a bit more and set some bigger goals and objectives as part of that. Next up is the community survey. We'll recap, we would recap what was in the 2019 city survey, and then any information that we glean out of an upcoming survey that we're preparing for posting on the website. Next up is equity action planning. This idea is still taking a bit of root, but it goes beyond what you discussed in the last agenda item, which is more about the city as an employer, our employee-employer relations, and moves beyond that to talk more about what we look at for equity action, equity planning across as a city, as a jurisdiction. So it would expand upon our prior work and look forward to integrating it to other aspects. The Cameron Road Urban Design Strategy or Study Project is one directed at the last retreat. We would bring this back to you in terms of where we've been, what the results of that work are, and discuss next steps. This could, of course, happen at a regular council meeting, and that was the prior plan to do so. Sustainability and green practices, you do have an agenda item up next generally on this topic, but here we could go into more detail about these issues and talk about what the city is doing to be a green organization. And then finally, transportation and circulation, always a recurring topic and an important one. Here, we'd look at traffic congestion management, use of signal coordination, flashing yellow arrows and bandwidth improvements, changes in traffic patterns as a result of the COVID-19 event, and as well as our long-term transportation needs and priorities. The items that are starred here, the first four are ones we're specifically recommending be included as priority topics, and as we get into the schedule and format in the next slide, and talk about what the, that format of the organization will be, that's important to keep in mind, what of these you want to include. So there may be other topics you'd like to include, and we'd like to hear from you this evening on that. On the schedule and format, we can certainly do a single-day or multi-day options. We've done both before. Two years ago, we did a multi-day event. This was a Friday afternoon, about 3:00 to 8:00, and then a Saturday morning, 9:00 to 2:00. But two years before that, we did a single-day event that was 3:00 to 9:00, so we have flexibility to go either direction. It really depends on the number of topics and the anticipated depth of discussion as we go through with those topics. The more topics we have, the more depth you want to go into on those issues, the more time we're ultimately going to need. And really to have an effective discussion, dialogue, direction, you really want to allocate more time to these topics. Consisto of Public Health Directives, this will be conducted entirely online, much like this meeting, and will be open to the public. We're looking at a couple of options, whether it is our Teams platform or more traditional Zoom platform to do that, and we'll have information and pathway for the public to participate later in the new year. As I mentioned, we'll have the facilitator organizing and helping keep us on schedule and go through the process, but at this point, based upon the online format and some of the technicalities around that and these topics, we think that doing a single-day event's going to make the most sense. And then finally, if there's any topics of particular interest that you don't make the cuts, staff would recommend looking at those for either a particular regular council meeting or special study session meetings later in the year. So again, we're looking for feedback on what format and schedule you'd like to include here. And then finally, in terms of the dates, we're targeting February, as we've done previously. This gives us adequate time in late December and January to prepare all the materials and presentations, agenda, and so on, and then it also aligns with our budget process so that the outcomes from the, from this retreat can get integrated in the budgets and then presented to you at the end of May. So in coordination with our facilitator, we have four dates proposed for your consideration that are up here. February 16th and 23rd are both Tuesdays, February 25th is a Thursday, and then February 26th as a Friday. So that concludes the presentation, and I can go back a couple slides, and we can run through these individually.
Thank you, Christopher. I will open the public comment opportunity. Mr. Lindgren?
And we did not receive any written comments submitted prior to the meeting, nor do I have anyone sign up to speak on item 10.3. That will conclude the public comment opportunity.
Great, then I will close the public comment opportunity, and we'll just go one by one here. I'll start off this time with Councilmember Suein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate staff's work in this. I think it's, this retreat is extremely important, just focusing us on things and giving the public idea of what we are interested in and the direction the city's going. Couple of questions, first off, Christopher, two things that I think are very important but aren't on here, housing affordability and homelessness. I understand you guys are, were planning a workshop on those two subjects later in the next year, is that correct?
There is an item on homelessness that'll be coming back to you in the new year. Relative to housing, that was a topic area last time that teed us up for the housing element update, which we're in the middle of. So that project, we will have draft materials out early in the new year, and there's a statutory deadline for adoption in May. So at this point, we were not considering a standalone item for that, but we certainly could, but there will be hearing dates with both the council and the planning commission later in the spring.
Okay, yeah, I think that, you know, there, it's, it's closely tied, and it impacts homelessness, so I think, you know, it's good that we'll be able to cover it with the housing element, and if we need to go into something separate, then we can do it at that point. For these topics here that, that you've proposed- For these topics here that you've proposed, you know, I like all of them. I think, given the COVID environment and trying to do things online is going to be pressing for folks, so my, as much as I think it warrants a two-day session, because we have a lot going on, I will suggest or advocate for a one-day because of that, because again, because of the COVID environment and us being online. As for the topics, I would prioritize the top ones above, mission is vision and goals, high priority projects, the budget, of course, governance and the age of districts, definitely the community survey, let's hear what our residents want to focus on as well. And then either Elk Grove as a smart city, or, as you say, transportation and circulation. I feel like we cover that a lot already, but maybe if we want to just speak about mobility in general, how we hope to get around in the future, I'd be open to that. But I think the, you know, the top three, five, or, yeah, top four and plus community survey, I think those are the ones we should probably focus on during that, that one day. Camera Urban Design Strategy, we're, I know staff's already working on that, and we get periodic updates on that. And then equity action planning, I think, is worthwhile as well, but I feel like we can cover that in a separate workshop. So those are my comments. Thank you.
All right. Council member Hume.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll kind of pick up where council member Soon left off. As far as the slide that we're looking at here, I would agree that we should take the starred items. There's a lot that is included in those alone. I would like to move the Cameron Road Urban Design Strategy up into the high priority projects, because whether it's the urban design strategy or not, Camera has been identified in the past as our number one, number two, and number three project. So I think we should capture that up there. And then I would, beyond the starred topics, I think, you know, potentially taking a look at the community survey, so we can see a snapshot of how other people think we're doing and go from there. So, and I wholly support a one-day. I think it'd be a long day. I would prefer it to be on that Friday that was offered in those dates, simply that way we can go into the weekend on a high note. But I'm going to, I'm going to push back a little bit, given that this is scheduled for February, which will be beyond the three-week restriction that just will go into place tomorrow night. We have a huge ballroom gathering dust in District 56 right now, and I think it's completely possible for the council members, department heads, or whatever staff supporters appropriate, and the facilitator to be in that ballroom socially distanced. You know, it's always exciting to get together and discuss ideas and think big, but it requires a certain amount of interplay, I believe, and feeding off of one another. And I just don't think that the online environment lends itself to that as well as being together and sort of feeling the energy in the room, if you will. And so I think we have the AV equipment there baked into the infrastructure of the building that we could livestream it, or, you know, even somehow participate through a Teams portal so that the public can, can take place and observe in real time and participate as well. But I'm really going to advocate that we get together for this, please.
Thank you, Council member Hume. Council member Speed.
Okay, so I am supportive of council member Hume's idea of meeting in person. Of course, we remember that the three-week is a minimum. It could be longer. So if we do decide to try to do an in-person, we certainly need to be flexible enough to, or nimble enough to go back to an online structure, and I think everybody recognizes that. In terms of the topics, hearing some of the very important things that I think people want to discuss, I think it becomes a challenge on how much we can actually pack into one day. So, you know, I'm certainly supportive of the asterisk items. I, I might push back a little bit, though, on if some of these other items are important and they need the appropriate time, then perhaps we should prioritize them in coming back as an individual item during the council meetings. So I'm not hard over on that. I'm simply saying that that's a whole lot to try to pack into one single day and give it the appropriate time.
Next, we have Vice Mayor Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with most of everything that has been said already. All the asterisks, I believe, are definitely priority topics. I do also agree with council member Hume in moving the Cameron Road up, and the community survey definitely is an important tool. Council member Soon said exactly what I was thinking too, and that was the housing and homelessness element. But if Mr. Jordan says we're pulling all that together and waiting for an update for May, that's fine. I just would like to see if we could have some sort of a discussion there at the retreat, just because it's so important, especially in District 4. I think council member Hume just misses all of us. That's why he's highly advocating for us to meet in person. I love the fact that we're going to meet in District 56. I want us to also take to note that if we are meeting in person, we want to make sure that the consultants and the staff, and having the livestream available for our community to be able to listen in and also give comments as well, too. I think it's great. I would love to see all of you in person. I haven't seen everybody in a while, and I agree, these are such very important topics. It's different when we see each other, we're all in person, than when we do it over the internet here. So if we can meet in person, I am all for meeting in person, especially at our new District 56, which has not been utilized as much as we would hope it would be. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So a few thoughts here. First of all, you know, this is going to be a great opportunity for all of us to get together and including, obviously, the two newest members of this amazing team. I'm a strong proponent of data-driven decision-making, where you get true data back to really help guide the next steps. So I can sit here and say, you know, for me personally, my, you know, some of the issues that are very important for me is smart city, transportation, equity action planning. I mean, all of these are sound topics, and we should be looking at all of them. But in terms of narrowing the focus for our retreat, I think rather than, you know, we've listed here that we're going to get some stakeholder feedback, and I think that that's great. That's something that I shared with the city manager, as well as Mr. Jordan during my own orientations, that before we have a retreat, we really need to get data so that we can make our decisions based on that data, so that it's our city's goals and not just mine or any individual council member. So what I would challenge us is to be very thoughtful in our stakeholder engagement process, to not just make a survey available, but truly, truly go above and beyond to get that necessary stakeholder engagement feedback. I know it's hard, because it does require extra dedication and an extra time commitment from staff. But if we're typically getting the same usual residents that chime in, that may not necessarily be reflected of where the city is, then it, then it, you know, it's our responsibility to ensure that we get their feedback. So I would suggest not just doing the surveys, but even utilizing January. And I think Vice Mayor Wynn, you talked about certain needs in your district. Well, I imagine we have unique needs in other districts as well. So can we do sort of the telephone town hall, or can we do some other layer of engagement to get feedback beyond a survey? So that is something that if that's possible to do, therefore, we would utilize all of January and parts of February. I would push almost to have our retreat a little bit later in February so that we have an opportunity to get true stakeholder engagement. One of the things that I've heard time and time again is, you know, one, a lot of residents are just intimidated to come to City Hall and share their concerns. We know, we all know that. But surveys are very hard from the standpoint, a lot of people just don't participate in those. I know that firsthand in the last eight years, when we do surveys, it takes a lot. So we go above and beyond, and we utilize other resources. We have our HOAs. We have our different committees. We can utilize a lot of other departments and other strategies to truly get, you know, quality stakeholder engagement. It should be more than just checking off a checkbox that we did it. It needs, it should be a lot more expansive. So my desire would be, you know, I love all of these topics, and I have my own personal ones that I'm a big champion of and a proponent of. But I want to hear from the voters, the residents throughout our community, what's most important to them? And if our last survey, I heard at the beginning, was two years old, two years ago is a long time in the world of important issues of the day. So I'm glad that we're moving forward on having a retreat, that we're checking in with council on potential topics, and engaging our stakeholders, our residents. But I would challenge us to do more than just a survey, to truly get strong stakeholder engagement and feedback. So that would be my ask, is to do more. So I think we've all shared our different, you know, our different, lend our voices, shared our opinions on various items, and provided some feedback. So I know that all of us are meeting individually with the facilitator as well. I have my appointment next week, so I will reiterate some of these to the facilitator as well as sharing it with staff. But great opportunity here for all of us to get strong feedback and include that as part of our board retreat. So without any further questions, are there any questions on perhaps anything I have said?
Yes, I have a question. So just to clarify, are you asking to postpone this to a later date? Because I think we need to identify a date today, too. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah. I'm proposing the last date of February, or just the later parts of the four dates that were, so that's a different slide if we want to go back to that slide. I saw four options. I would suggest the latter dates only because if we truly want to get stakeholder engagement, then we can utilize as much time to get that necessary feedback to help shape our discussions and identify our priorities. So whether it's the 23rd, 25th, 26th, those are, those are all, I think, great opportunities. The 16th, I mean, it could work, but just the more opportunity we have to get feedback, I think, will be better served.
I think council member Hume said he could do the 26th on Friday. I'm available that day as well, too. That's the latest dates available. And, and just so that staff has direction, as far as the community survey, are you asking them to do more than that, just because?
More than just survey, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then your ideas about more than just a survey? Are you talking like phone banking? Are you talking mailers? Because with everything shutting down, it's going to be real difficult for folks to be able to, or for our staff to be able to pull this together.
Right.
The holidays coming up as well, too. So I just want to be cognizant of that.
Absolutely. No, so what I'm saying is, we could, the survey is just a tool, but we have a limited database and a limited level of engagement. To expand that to other groups that we don't necessarily reach out to, so reach out to the HOAs to get their feedback. But more importantly, is there an opportunity to even do, like a Zoom meeting? We can call it a town hall. We can call it a number of things, but an opportunity to go to our different districts and hear from them via Zoom if needed. Yes, it's more time, but the, the data, the information that we'll get will definitely help shape our discussions and really, truly help identify what the most important issues and topics are for our community. So sometimes we do have to go out to them. So I see a more extended, expansive survey than our traditional methods of just either making it available and utilizing our database, but reaching out to other stakeholders to participate. HOAs are a great place where you have a built-in community that this information can be shared, and we can get some excellent feedback from there. And then explore the opportunity, if it's not four Zoom meetings, maybe it's, it's a couple. But just another opportunity for residents to share. Because, you know, we all know they participate at very different levels.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This is council member Soon. First, I want to, just on the date, I'm, I can make 25th or 26th work if we wanted to do that, either virtually or in person. I only agree to District 56 if council member Hume does a rap performance that he is so talented in doing. We'd like to hear him sing and perform again. And then, as far as going and doing additional outreach, I hear what you're saying, and I'm supportive of that. But, you know, I'm just trying to make sure, you know, you know, staff's, enabling staff to be successful, meaning that if, you know, sometimes, you know, we reach out and just people don't respond. But I like your idea of leveraging the HOAs, and perhaps, you know, we could, you know, advertise with, you know, the citizen if we haven't done that, and then have the HOAs conduct their own surveys, or take the city's survey and, and, you know, and speak to their membership, and then return that information back to staff. I'd like to seek staff's input on, on that route as well. But maybe we can do a little bit, a little bit more.
Yeah.
So Madam Mayor, so we heard, oh, there's consensus on 25th and 26th. From my, Kevin, I don't know if you shared your dates? Council member Speed?
No, I haven't yet. And so I'm available 25th or 26th. I guess my input on that is, I would expect that you would likely get more involvement on a Thursday than a Friday. I don't know if that holds up, but at least, you know, as a, as a private citizen, I was guarding my Fridays very closely. So that would, I would, I can do 25, I can do any of those four. I would prefer 25, then 26.
And I'm available for any of them.
When can we get an answer on the District 56 option in terms of our ability to socially distance?
A lot of those are not in our control right now, as we know.
So, Madam Mayor, if I could jump in?
Yes, please.
This is Christopher. So we, well, certainly, our plan was to continue tracking that to see where things were going to land. Certainly, one of our concerns is just the overall total amount of people that would be in the facility in order to, to manage it and, and make it successful. So beyond the five of you, there's a cadre of staff that would be in attendance as well, at least another five to 10 people. So while we do have the physical square footage space to adequately distance, the logistics of managing the audio, the visuals, and being able to push that out to a livestream with the physical spacing will continue, will be something we'll have to work on. So I can't 100% commit that we could do it, but we can look into it. And certainly, given where things may or may not be at the end of February, certainly, whatever the guidance is from state and county health, from CDC, there may be guidance that, that isn't the most practical thing to do. The other thing I will mention is, as we were working with putting together the scope with the facilitator, one of her concerns, she has personal issues and concerns with attending in-person. attending in-person in a February date that was much later in the year and say vaccine was adequately distributed at that time. She mentioned she needed to look at that differently. So I think we need to talk with her a little bit more and it could be a circumstance where we might look at, need to look at other staff resources at their firm, which certainly is an option, but that could be something we need to, to explore if you're, if the guidance allows and it's your preference for an in-person. Certainly, staff's preference would be for an in-person as well if we could pull that off.
Great. All right, any other questions or comments? We'll work with, with our, during our individual meetings and then work with staff to see how we can best expand stakeholder engagement and make the best use of January and parts of February. All right, hearing nothing else, we will move on to the next item.
Actually, Madam Mayor, I think we would like to get a firm date from the council. We heard differing opinions. I think we had a couple that wanted the 26th and maybe a couple that wanted the 25th. So if we can get clear direction on that, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Was there somebody who just wa, who was only available on the 26th? I thought I heard maybe one, perhaps not.
No, I had just suggested that I'm available any of those days. Thursday is fine.
I'm good with Thursday as well.
All right, so is that good for everyone? February 25th, any conflicts?
I'm good.
And just, and just to clarify, it'll be like an eight to five kind of thing?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes, it would be a daytime, so probably nine o'clock start. We'll probably wrap up sometime between three and four would be my guess.
All right. It will be February 25th. Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Great, thank you.
Next item.
And with that, that'll take us to item 10.4, which is to receive an update on the city's sustainability efforts and provide direction as appropriate.
Good evening. Can you just confirm you can hear me okay and see my screen?
Indeed. You're in kind of a display mode on a PDF, it looks like, so I don't know if you want to go full screen.
Thank you. So this is Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager for the city. And I wanted to provide an, an update on sustainability efforts that the city is doing. The city's committed to sustainability, commitment to sustainability is outlined in a number of places in the general plan. One of our guiding principles outlined there is a sustainable and healthy community. Additionally, the general plan recognizes the important role that the city plays in sustainability with a policy topic on sustainable development, which includes goals for sustainable city management and green building. These goals ensure the city leads by example through sustainable, ongoing municipal operations and management. The city has a number of activities that demonstrate the commitment to sustainability in these goal areas. The center at District 56, as you, all we're talking about, is a leading example of green building practices and is currently undergoing LEED gold certification, which is a globally recognized standard for environmental design. A large solar array is in the process of being installed at District 56 that will provide enough energy to power the entire campus, creating a net zero energy campus. In addition, the animal shelter was, which opened in 2019, was also designed using sustainable and green building practices. The city has also worked on identifying opportunities to improve energy efficiency and promote sustainable operations at existing city facilities. So beginning in 2017, the city entered into a solar shares agreement with SMUD to provide solar power to existing city facilities. This agreement ensures that 50% of the power of eligible buildings electricity uses through solar. Water efficiency upgrades have been ongoing at city facilities over several years, including upgrading features in all bathrooms and adjusting sprinkler, landscaping sprinkler controls to reduce water usage. The city is also undergoing a review of current electric vehicle charging capabilities with an eye towards improving the infrastructure to support both city staff charging capabilities and city fleet transition to electric vehicles. And this review identified eight different locations that would significantly expand access and availability of EV charging. And this project is pending, the Air District reopening a grant opportunity to support the funding. The city is also in process of rolling out a program to eliminate the purchase of single use plastic water bottles by the city. So in previous years, the city has purchased upwards of 20,000 single use plastic water bottles each year for various purposes, including city, city council and commission meetings, city police patrol and field staff meetings with external parties or, or for special events. Each plastic bottle has an estimated carbon footprint of approximately three ounces of carbon dioxide resulting in a combined total of about 3,750 pounds of carbon dioxide each year just from the water bottles that we purchased, which is equivalent to driving a gasoline vehicle for approximately four months. So going forward, the city will no longer have single use plastic water bottles available for staff or visitors. Instead, we're implementing the following steps. One is ensuring that we have water filling stations available at all city facilities. Two will be purchasing biodegradable cups that will be provided for meetings with outside visitors once City Hall is having meetings with outside visitors again. Third, we will have, water filling stations will be provided at any city organized events and we will encourage volunteers and staff to bring a refillable water with them or we will have a few available at the event so that, in the event that they forget them. Fourth, reusable water bottles will be provided to each staff member. And we're currently in the process of procuring those and for police and field staff who need additional water for longer shifts, they will also be provided with an insulated water jug to complement the reusable water bottle that they'll be given. So this is being rolled out over the next few months as we get supplies in for this. The city has also organized a green team working group, which consists of staff across the organization from different departments. Over the coming months, this group will, is working to identify goals and act, and additional actions the city as an organization can implement to further our organization's sustainability commitment. And this will include looking across the organization at facilities, information technology, fleet, public works, investing, and employee incentives for ideas. So as part of this effort, staff would be interested in receiving council input on proposed long-term sustainability goals and practices for city operations. In terms of the fiscal impact, the overall impact is not yet known. It will depend on what specific activities are undertaken. With the elimination of single use plastic water bottles, it's expected to save the city approximately $20,000 a year in direct costs. Currently, the city spends approximately $27,000 per year on single use plastic water bottles. In the initial year, the outlay for this transition will be about $26,000 for upgrades to existing water dispensers and for providing the reusable water bottles and jugs. But future estimated cost is between $5,000 and $6,000 per year for equipment rental for maintenance and for reusable bottles for new staff. So with that, I am happy to take any questions. And as I mentioned, we're interested in receiving any council input on other possible long-term sustainable, sustainability goals and practices for city operations.
All right, thank you for the great presentation. I will open the public comment opportunity. Jason?
And we have not received any prior written comments to the meeting on item 10.4 in order to have anyone signed up to speak or to call in to speak. So that'll conclude public comment for item 10.4.
Thank you. I will now close the public comment opportunity and turn it over to council members with any questions or comments. I will start with Councilmember Hume.
No questions. Nice presentation, Carrie.
Thank you. Councilmember Bees?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilmember Soon?
No questions, just want to commend staff. Great work. I'm glad this effort continues forward. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor, when?
Thank you, ma'am. No comments. Actually, just one, I think the youth that both Councilmember Soon and I had worked with, remember we met with them at Consumnis Oaks, I believe, and we talked about doing green things like this. I think they would really appreciate seeing this and hearing this about how it's moving forward. So thank you for the presentation.
Good point.
Thank you. And as a school board member that was actively involved at the time, I can assure you they're, they're very pleased, I am sure, to see our city's sustainability efforts. Great to see the work here and the progress. Excellent presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
The next item will be item 10.5, which is review list of local appointments and provide direction regarding appointments to city commissions and committees. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Jason Lindgren, I'm your city clerk. I just have a verbal presentation on this item. In the staff report is presented the list of local appointments. It's a requirement by state law that we show those opportunities for members of our public to serve on appointed positions in our local commissions and committees. And the other purpose of the local appointments list is that it also identifies that when vacancies do occur on those positions, that there is a period in which we advertise the opening of a unplanned vacancy to give members of the public an opportunity to serve in those capacities. Part of where we stand for a unique position here as of tonight is that for the local appointments to our city commissions and committees, we have positions appointed to all positions. We don't have any vacancies that I've become aware of. Part of the process that we've done is that when we have encountered a reorganization in the city council and election year, what we do and what the council has asked me to do is to reach out to all of our current appointees. It's a good time of the year to do it. It's a kind of a beginning of a new, but it's also a time when folks reflect in what their time and commitments are in the upcoming new year. And what the ask has been from the council in the past is that I reach out to our current appointees to see if they have an interest to continue to serve in their appointed capacity. If they don't, part of the ask that I have is that if they reply back that they're stepping down from their appointed seat, is that you give me the authorization to commence a recruitment for those vacant positions. I would let the full council know what positions were becoming open as a result of the outreach and then I would schedule appointments depending on when I hear and when the, the timing for notice and things of that nature for the openings to return any kind of appointments to either the meetings in January or the first part of February. But with that, the listing is before you. If you have any questions or concerns, I am available.
Okay, thank you, Jason. I will open up the public comment opportunity.
We've not received any written comments, but we do have a caller who has requested to call in. And staff will be patching the caller through here on item 10.5.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, this is Sharon Anderson, and I'm one of your representatives on the City Trails Committee. And I just wanted to make sure that you heard from at least one of us in your item that, and I know you probably saw a couple of charts here and your habit indicated, you know, a possible disparity of representation on the committee. We wanted to make sure that you know that we need to do and think the entire area, all the different districts, and, and that it could, how we accomplish it takes many avenues. The, one of the things that we've done is we've made sure that the green bike lanes over into the District One area. The projects that, that, that you know throughout the entire city to look at connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists and, and other users of non-vehicular mobility. We do do all of that and I just wanted to let you know that you can have full confidence in who you have right now in the City's Trails Committee going forward. You know, things like the camera road extension, we've provided extensive comments on that as well as to make sure that the white lock, white lock interchange contains bike and pet access across the freeway there. So just wanted to give you that and if you have any questions, please let me know. Very interesting meeting thus far. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, caller. Mr. Lindgren, any more public comments?
And no other requests to call in to speak. That concludes our public comment on item 10.5.
All right, so I will close the public comment opportunity at this time and open it up for discussions. I do have some comments that I'd like to make here. So I'll just share some of my thoughts here since the mayor gets to appoint and the council gets to confirm or, I'm hearing some background, sorry about that. So it's, it's always great to see so much interest in participating in our various committees. I've looked at the binder and I've looked at the duration that people have served from almost from the early days of cityhood to, to this day and seeing a lot of continuity and consistency, which is, which is great to see. I know over the course of the years, there's been a number of vacancies for a lot of different, different boards and commissions. But there's one commission that is, is very important. And it's, it's not that they're not all important, I mean, don't get me wrong, every one of our boards and commissions are, are invaluable in that we provide excellent resources and education and do great work in our community. Our planning commission, they make very, very important decisions as it relates to our land use policies that help shape and guide our city. And we, we don't have term limits that I've seen here, obviously, and we just sort of check in and, and have an opportunity of our volunteers to let us know if they're interested in serving, which is great and it's a, it's a, it's a pretty good tool, but you know, because we don't have term limits, it's also a good opportunity to let others serve as it relates to one commission particularly. And like I said, all of them are invaluable, but there is one commission, if council agrees and is interested in considering, I would like to open up on one of, on just the planning commission and open up that opportunity and ask our, if the current commission, if they're either interested or not, but open that back up and ask our planning commissioners to reapply. And with that thought going into place of, you know, this is, we're, we're charting a new course, we have new council, we have a new mayor, and, and this committee, this commission is important and those land use decisions are very important. And, and I think it's a good opportunity to revisit and have those that are interested reapply. And I know a number of them, they're great people and I anticipate reappointing, but I'd like to revisit the planning commission appointments. All the others, I don't want to touch, touch those at all. I think that, you know, there's, there's great continuity there, but it is an opportunity for us to check with them to see if they are interested in serving so that if there are vacancies by default of just, of not wanting to come back for various reasons, then we can visit those at a future date. But I would like to ask the city council to consider reopening the planning commission appointments and seek applications. And ask all of our commissioners to reapply.
I just have a, Madam Mayor, I have a procedural question if I can ask either Mr. Bierman or Mr. Hobbs to chime in here. Is that something we can do where the other appointed positions can stay, but the planning commission we can take and have? commission, we can take and have everybody reapply again? And then maybe if Mr. Lindgren can kind of chime in, because I know he said a bit already where we were going to do something, we, he would need some time to go back and ask them if they're interested in reapplying. We'd have to, and then I guess, Madam Mayor, how soon are you looking to do this reappointment? The next meeting, couple meetings down? So just maybe some processes to clarify the ask.
So Vice Mayor Wen, I'm happy to try to address your questions first. This is City Attorney John Hobbs. So the committees and commissions, including your planning commission, serve at the will of the council. So the council always has the opportunity to essentially remove and re, and call for reappointment of the planning commission, which is what I'm understanding the mayor is suggesting, what you would essentially be doing. If I understand the mayor's suggestion, I invite her to clarify if I get it wrong, is open up all five seats on the planning commission for reappointment. There are currently no vacancies, but you would effectively be creating five vacancies for appointment or reappointment, depending on what happens, and have the existing planning commission, should they like to continue, to reapply. And to answer your question, Vice Mayor Wen, the council does have that authority, if that's something you would like to do. We'd bring that back for a formal action to essentially open up the, the five seats, but the council as a whole could do that. You'd essentially be creating five vacancies immediately and asking for reapplications of anyone who would like to participate, plus anyone new who would like to apply for those
You summed it up correctly. Thank you, Mr. Hobbs.
All right, thanks.
If I can jump in just in regards to timing, I think the main elements that we'd want to look at is not unseating individuals, because I do believe we have some meetings of the planning commission that will be scheduled going into the next few weeks and into the new year. And so part of what the intent would be is, from what I'm hearing and being described, is the opening of applications for the planning commission. And what the timing issues that would come down is just really a matter of how much time you would want to have the advertisements. I think with our meeting schedule, we would meet the state requirements, especially if the direction was given this evening to start a recruitment process. We would easily be able to come back by the January 13th meeting. Some considerations, though, is just to give folks a little bit more time in considering their submission of an application, or also provide that time for folks to, to do outreach to members of the council and the mayor. And so your consideration could also be pushing that out to even a meeting of January 27th or further beyond that. But either of those dates in January could be accommodated.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Thoughts, considerations from council?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Hume. I will say that with very rare exception, planning commissioners generally are, are fairly shady, you know, ne'er-do-wells, and, and it's, it's just that, that really needle in the haystack that they, you know, ever, no, I'm just kidding. I, I would support the, the overall direction of, of just saying, look, everybody has to reapply, given that there's a change in the mayorship. And I hear what Mr. Lindgren just said, and I believe that I, I would like to, to give even more time, and so maybe look at February or even March date to, to have that reappointment slash a new appointment take place.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. I see Mr. Sun raising his hand.
Right, I defer to Councilmember Spees.
Yeah, so I would just kind of, I'd like to ask staff a question. I think we have, I can think of one very large land use planning issue coming up in 2021 relative to affordable housing. What, what other large things are, are coming up?
This is Darren Wilson, Development Services Director. Probably the largest project we have is CNU coming to planning commission on slated for the second meeting in January.
Yeah, I went to February to be thoughtful and methodical and just be able to provide enough time and, you know.
But what about, what about affordable housing? That's, I mean, that's later in '21?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I think you're speaking of the housing element.
Yes.
So that, we're looking for that later in April. And then, and we have a few other projects, annexation. I know our January agendas are, are pretty full.
Okay. Give me, give me a few more minutes to mull some things. Councilmember Sun, or excuse me.
Councilmember, Mayor members of the council, I know this is a little out of order, but we're approaching the 10 o'clock hour, and for the new council members, we need a motion to go past 10 o'clock if we're going to continue the meeting. Hate to break the, the momentum here, but if the desire of the council is to go past 10 o'clock, can we get a motion on that? Move the 10 o'clock item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
And for that roll call vote on waiving the 10 o'clock rule so that we can continue and finish out the agenda tonight, I will be starting the roll call with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume. Councilmember Sun.
Yes.
Councilmember Wen.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes, thank you.
Continue past 10 as I.
All right, continue deliberations. I believe Darren.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I hear Councilmember Spees is, is thinking about it, and it's, it's, it's a good consideration. I do think, I mean, we're always going to have a city business, so I don't know if there's any, you know, good time, so to speak. I, I, I would defer to the Madam Mayor's request, given it's her, it's her prerogative. I'll support that.
Thank you, Mr. Sun. So Vice Mayor Wen, you had some clarifying questions? Any other questions perhaps or comments?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's fine. I mean, we do have two new council members, a new mayor, and so I, I think giving you, Mayor, and Councilmember Spees the opportunity to chime in on the planning commission. I know we've got some ex-planning commissioner members on the council already, both Councilmember Hume and the new Councilmember Spees, and giving you both the opportunity to pick individuals or play a role in, in naming the individuals for the planning commission, I, I think that's a good idea. I'd support that.
Great. Mr. Spees, I know you wanted to mull it over. Did you have enough time?
Well, I, I, well, I'm, I'm really now just thinking mostly of, perhaps we could modify that to any who haven't been in the last six months. I mean, we just, we just got one new planning commissioner. I, I think that's a little, I don't know. I can support it. I just think that there's, there's some challenges with it, and we have to manage those.
I hear you, but I think, you know, we have their applications if they're interested. Mr. Lindgren, can we, can we accept their pre-existing applications for consideration?
That is part of our practice, so that those that we have on file, we always offer that they can either pass applicants within the last few years, but also any standing members that they could use their application that's on file. But during the application process, we also open the door that if there's anything additional that they wish to present as part of their application packet, we will accept that. I think where we would be is on the element of scheduling in terms of when you would want to see this return. I think in discussing with staff, it sounds as though we do have a lot of items that will be before the planning commission, but I think the goal of this recruitment is to have the recruitment open, receive applications, but all current planning commissioners, as long as they have that interest to continue to serve, would continue to serve until there is a transition period that's designated after the, when the appointments are made. And so I think we may have some flexibility in that in terms of opening up for the applications that we wouldn't be creating vacancies that would not allow the planning commission to meet in between.
Perfect. Okay, that answers a lot of any, of any questions I had in terms of timing and transition with the goal of obviously keeping our, our planning commissioners intact in making those decisions and meeting the meeting schedule. And then we'll work out a calendar that meets the needs of our timeline, and hopefully by late January, early February, we can be in a position to review the applicants and revisit our existing planning commissioners and make some recommendations.
Madam Mayor, it's Councilmember Sun. I would, I would also like to request, if we're going to do that, the, the custom has recently been, now that we have five districts, to consider that. And I just think I want to, for full transparency, everybody, the public, I think, should, should be aware, and I realize we only have four districts, five planning commissioners, but at least they know the past has been no, no more than two per district is, is what typically is done, although it's not set in stone. But I just think people should be aware of those things and take that into consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Sun. I am a strong proponent of district representation, so I do think that that is wise and a good, sound, continued practice that we do have representation from our four council districts, and then with the fifth being wherever that might be.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lindgren, do you need any more direction?
If I were to put out a date, that would kind of help the process for receiving applications and closing deadlines and things of that nature. From what I heard, there was kind of anywhere from a flux from that there's the possibility we could move in January, but also there was the concerns raised by Councilmember Hume of considering pushing that further back to February or March. Our meetings in February would be the 10th and 24th, and it's the type of thing that after we move through typically for planning commission, and especially with the consideration for opening all five seats, I would anticipate that we will receive numerous applications. And so just in terms of timing, if you did want to start in February, but if there were any issues that came up, we also have plenty of time between now and February that if time needed to be extended for whatever reason, there would be ample time for staff to come back in order to, to request any kind of a extension or anything of that nature. But if we did set a date for a council meeting that we could put as a target, it does help with the process of setting the guidelines for when we wish to receive applications and have those ready to go. And I've put out there the regular meeting dates of February 10th and February 24th kind of splits between that spread of January to March.
I opened to February 10th. It gives us plenty of time. We can utilize what we have the remainder of this month and then all of January and then parts of February.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sun, again, I was just wondering, would it be better to do it before, after the, the council retreat? If you, if you did it after the council retreat, you, we would have a, a new set of, you know, could be new set of whatever mission, vision, that kind of things that we could communicate to members? Just wondering if that would be, if folks want to consider that or not.
My two cents on that is the retreat and the commission appointment, while it's important to have, to know the different vision and goals, I think we can get some of that in the narrative of the application. I'm not sure what bearing our retreat would have on the application process, so, I mean, enlighten me, maybe I'm missing something.
Only the thought that once this council has that direction set, it's something that any applicants would know going in, the policies that are, that the, the council is advocating for, so it would just add a level of certainty. It's, it's not a must-have, but I just thought I would throw that out there for consideration.
So we, do we see, I don't recall seeing any major land use item on the retreat agenda per se, but not to say that it wouldn't come up during the surveys and so forth. So I could see, I mean, I see what you're saying, but I also don't want to necessarily prolong it either, so I'm willing to look at an alternative date, but I think February, at, at the latest, the second meeting in February.
That's fine.
Yep. Any other questions? So are we okay with February 10th, or do you prefer the following meeting? So we can give clear guidance to Mr. Lindgren.
I would, I would shoot for the 10th personally.
I'm good with the 10th.
All right, Mr. Lindgren, Mr. Spees?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Lindgren, you have a direction?
Yeah, just to recap, what I will be doing is I will be reaching out to all of our local boards, our commissions and committees, just to touch base with everyone here in the winter month and to confirm their desire to continue to serve on their respective boards. But what I will also do is reach out directly to our planning commission members and let them know that the seats are basically going to get open for an application process, and they're invited to apply back, and that goal is going to be get, to have the applications in a timeline so that we can bring that back to the February 10th meeting.
Perfect.
And if there are any other vacancies that do occur, whether, and it could even be from the planning commission itself, there may be members that say they decide to step down, or if any other members do, I will let the council know, just give them a heads up, but then those recruitments will initiate if there are open vacancies, and we'll, I'll look at the calendar as far as a good time as to when to bring back some of those other vacancies if they do crop up. But with that, that should do it for the direction on this item.
Great, then we'll move on to the next item. Thank you, everyone.
And that next item will be item 10.6. So this is to receive information and consider a resolution appointing and confirming city council appointments to regional boards, commissions, committees, and local and city standing committees. What this is in regards to is the appointments of the actual council members and where you serve on our regional boards. What happens with our reorganization is it creates vacancies in both director positions and alternate positions on various boards and committees that are throughout the region. Those are provided in your staff report packet. It's kind of given to you in different flavors so that you have an idea of what open vacancies there are, and also to give you some background information on those individual meetings so that you can, had an opportunity to look at the schedules to see if those will be cohesive with your schedules going into the 2021 year. I'm available to hear what appointments and what seats folks have available. It's also an opportunity for any council members, if you've looked at your schedules and are not able to make any commitments in the coming year, it can open up a few seats. One item I would highlight is that we do have the opening with the leaving of Steve Detrick, that what we will have is an opening on the city audit committee and then that state and legislative ad hoc committee as well. All those are up for consideration, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Let's go over the vacancies that we currently have. I, I'll just share right off on some of the, my areas of interest, and then we can go through, we'll see if there are other council members that are interested in some of these other positions before we visit the ones where we do have a council member assigned, but we can visit if there's any changes we want to take a look at.
If I can just jump in real quick, Mayor Singh Allen, is, I don't have anyone signed up to speak, nor have we received any written comments on this.
I apologize.
If you just want to open and close the public comment opportunity, we're good on that front.
Thank you. I appreciate that. At this time, I will open the public comment opportunity. Mr. Lindgren?
No comments. We haven't received any, and my comms are clear, so.
All right, I will close the public comment opportunity, but I've got the list here before me. I hope you all do too. So there's a vacancy on the very first one, Sacramento Metropolitan Air Management District Board. I would like to be considered for that one. Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission, I believe Mr. Detrick is vacating that. I don't know if Councilmember Spees, if you have an interest in that one or not. I'm also interested in the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District. And then going further in the list, I'll, the alternate for SACRT. And then I, I love all things legislation, so I would definitely be interested in the last one where there's a vacancy on state. where there's a vacancy on state and federal legislative discussions ad hoc committee. And rather than saying, oh, you know, for consideration, maybe if, if anyone's interested in these or any certain committee, I'm gonna offer, uh, offer this opportunity to Mr. Spees first. Are there any there, um, those that are vacant that you might be interested in?
Well, my, uh, my starting point on it was to make life easy and suggest that if there was, whatever, uh, past Councilman, what, what do we call it? Whatever, Councilman Detrick, whatever he had, I was willing to forklift over. Um, but there are items that you are, are interested in, and I'm certainly not interested in arm wrestling over them. So whatever, whatever you want of his, be free to take it.
If you're passionate about it, I, you know, I mean, we.
I, I got, I got no problems with it. I'm, I'm happy to be a team player. Whatever it is that you don't want of his, I don't wanna make it sound weird. Whatever which you don't prefer, I'm happy to take on.
Mayor.
Go ahead, some, um, who's speaking?
Vice Mayor Wen. I.
Sorry, I'm, I'm seeing some shudder. Sorry.
So I, I do have a little bit of a conflict. The Public Library Authority meetings happen on Wednesday, which are exactly the same days as my, uh, board meeting, and so they conflict and overlapped in, in hours. Sometimes our Public Library Authority meetings go into my actual board meeting, and so I have two screens up at the same time. So I'd like to, um, be taken off of that. Neither one of you can take my seat there.
Okay.
Ma- Madam Mayor, uh, this Councilmember Sun, um, for entirely different reason, I, I would ask to be taken off of library, uh, as well. Uh, I've served on there the last six years. Um, and I, I heard Councilmember Spees mentioning about, um, fulfilling Councilmember Detrick's roles, but I, I have an interest in the audit committee just because I've never done that. So, if Councilmember Spees would like to trade with me on that one, be willing to, or, you know, like to do that.
Jason, are you keeping a scorecard? So we have two vacancies here.
Indeed, I am. So, yeah, please proceed and I'll recap.
Okay, so Library Authority, um, I'm hearing that Vice Mayor Wen and Councilmember Sun would like to be removed from that. Um, I, I'm more than happy to serve on that. Uh, Mr. Spees or Mr. Hume, either one of you?
So I'll, I'll go ahead and chime in here, Madam Mayor. Uh, I, I don't want any new responsibilities. I'd like to keep the assignments that I have, but I would be willing to, uh, give up my position on the Transportation Authority Board, STA.
Thank you. I certainly am very interested in transportation issues. I don't wanna take everything. Mr. Spees? Which, which of the ones were you most passionate about? And let's see if we can make a deal.
Mr. Spees, uh, Councilor Spees, I'll offer you up Transportation Authority as well. So I've got a pretty.
Okay, so we'll do some changes there. So Councilmember Hume and Councilmember Sun off of SPA and we'll put in myself and, um, Councilmember Spees.
That'll do. I can do that. And I, I'm happy to take the library as well.
So we still need to fill the, um, alternate vacancy for STA, so can either Councilmember Hume, Sun, or Vice Mayor Wen for the alternate?
I'm happy to stay on as alternate if you wanna do that.
Okay, so we have.
I could as well.
Uh, it looks like we have only one alternate vacancy on that one.
Right, I'm just saying if Darren was just jumping on the grenade, I could also jump on the same grenade.
Very good, very good. Um, so let's go back to the ones that we still have vacant. Uh, so.
What, what time on Wednesday is that library?
Thursdays, they're on Thursdays from 3:00 to 5:00 PM.
But they usually don't go till 5:00. Oh, I thought you said it was on a Wednesday. I'm sorry.
Thursdays, yeah, Thursdays.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, Councilmember Spees, it, it's, I, I believe, we have a pretty good binder that, uh, Mr. Lindgren provided on the dates. I think I, if I'm not mistaken, it includes the dates and times for all of the committees.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I, and I have it up. I just can't make my mic mute fast enough so I don't give feedback and split between the two.
Don't worry.
Has, um, somebody taken on the alternate for the SAC Regional Transit yet?
Yes, myself. Um, we need Sacramento Area Sewer District, uh, anyone interested in that one? We need an alternate.
Uh, I'll do an alternate or, yeah, I can do an alternate on that.
Okay. Sacramento Public Library Authority, we need an alternate.
Which one was that for? I'm sorry.
The Library Authority, because we have the two. So Darren, you volun, you volunteered to stay there, right? As an alternate, not as a.
I'm, I'm staying as STA, STA as an alternate.
Okay, so we need, uh, an alternate for the Library Authority.
I, I can be the alternate, but, you know, it just depends if it, if, um, it goes into my meeting, I have to leave so I can go into my meeting.
No, I, I could do, I could do an alternate there as well.
So we, we need one.
Yeah, that's fine. I can do it because Councilmember Wen has, uh, her board meeting obligations.
Okay. Um, so just going down the vacancy list so that Jason can fill it out on his end. STA, I put myself. The regi, or I'm sorry, Sacramento Regional Transit District as an alternate, uh, myself, Sacramento Transportation Authority. Um, we have the, let's see, what did we put for the alternate? Uh, Darren? Correct? Uh, Councilmember Sun?
Yes.
What I asked, yeah.
And then, uh, the Sacramento Tree Foundation, we need an alternate. Any takers?
Sure, I'd, I'd be willing to do that.
Okay.
As an alternate.
Okay, so Councilmember Hume. Alker of Audit Committee, Mr. Councilmember Sun offered, uh, his interest in there, so we're good with that. Um, Legislative Committee, if there's no objections, I'd like to do that one. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the existing ones and see if there's some changes. Um, for, uh, the JPA, are we good as is? We have Councilmember Hume and Councilmember Sun as the alternate. So no changes?
For the connector, yeah, I'd continue to serve on that.
Okay. Uh, what about Central Valley Express Advisory Committee? Currently, we have Councilmember Hume and Vice Mayor Wen as the alternate. Are we good there? Willing to continue serving?
Yep.
Okay. Next, uh, Secod, we have Councilmember Sun and the alternate as, uh, Vice Mayor Wen. Are we good there?
Yep.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next, we have Sacramento Area Sewer District. We have Councilmember Hume. We have the vacancy, uh, for an alternate.
I can do that.
Great. We have Councilmember Spees on board with that one.
Uh, that's me, Sun.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Real quick, uh, Madam Mayor, for that one, I think we need a board member for Sanitation District who would then also be the alternate for the Sewer District. They're two different boards, but they meet at the same time.
Okay, so the Sanitation District, I'm doing that one.
Then you would be, then you would by default be the alternate for the SASD.
Okay, I guess it's me then. Thank you.
So, so I, if we can go back and revisit something for, uh, Regional Transit, Vice Mayor Wen has been very involved with, uh, RT via, um, her role, I think it's through Secod, and correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie. And then also in the Paratransit and as a part of the RT Paratransit Transition. And so if it's all right with you, Madam Mayor, I think she would be a good fit to be the alternate for RT.
I have no problem with that. Vice Mayor Wen, is that good?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, where did I leave off here on the list here? Okay, so we're now to Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District Board. Uh, I'm volunteering for that one. Um, currently, Vice Mayor Wen, you're the alternate, so are you good to stay as the alternate?
Sure, I could stay as the alternate.
Okay, Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission, um, Councilmember Spees, are you good with that one?
Yep.
And, uh, Vice Mayor Wen, we have you as the alternate.
Fine.
Okay. We've taken care of the Library Authority. We've done sanitation. Uh, just reconfirming Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, uh, with Councilmember Hume. And then, um, Councilmember Sun as the alternate. Is that fine as is?
Yes.
Okay. Sacramento Regional Transit, uh, is Councilmember Hume with, uh, we just did that one with, um, Council, or Vice Mayor Wen. So the Transportation Authority, we've taken care of that one with myself and Councilmember Spees. And, uh, Councilmember Sun as the alternate. That leaves us the Sacramento Tree Foundation. Currently, we have Vice Mayor Wen and then alternate, Mr. Spees, Councilmember Spees. So are we good? Um, Vice Mayor Wen, are you fine with the Tree Foundation?
Yes.
Is there anything I missed, Mr. Lindgren?
I think you've got all the bases covered. We've got for also the Audit Committee, the, that position filled and the state and led, and federal ad hoc. So I think we are good. What I would just ask the council to do is that if you can, by motion and second, uh, adopt the resolution and we'll have that exhibit updated for all of those appointments that were confirmed tonight.
Excellent. Can I get a mash, a motion and a second to confirm these recent appointments that we just talked about?
Go move. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
And that roll call vote, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes.
That resolution will pass 5-0 and that will confirm our items. Alexis, take us next back in time, uh, to our section three, our closed session items. And typically for our closed session, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, we do have, uh, opportunity for public comment. And I'll just throw out there that I don't have any, uh, pre-written comments or nor anyone signed up to speak for the closed session items.
All right. Um, let's see. I'll open the public comment opportunity.
Yep, and no comments have been submitted and my comms are clear.
And so we will close the public comment opportunity and I will ask, uh, Mr. Lindgren to announce our closed session items.
And those items being 3A, threat to public services or facilities, consultation with the City of Elk Grove Police Chief and City Attorney. And item 3B, conference of legal counsel for existing litigation for one matter, Helen Dotson versus City of Elk Grove. Uh, with that, for our new members, uh, the environment is that what we will ask you to do is to, um, you can leave this meeting environment and then you will be able to, um, go into the meeting environment for the closed session. So you won't be in both at the same time. You'll be closed out of one of them. But as you go into the closed session and then if there's any reportable action, you'd come back into this environment for that reportable action.
Okay, so we can sign off here and go into closed session.
Yeah, what we should be seeing is everybody kind of disappearing from this meeting environment.